Mr. Chair, we're live on YouTube, so whenever you'd like to start, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment Publics hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebX Webinar, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebX webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when your item is called, your item will be unmuted. Each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We also ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an AT&amp;D. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credits. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, as amended this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment, the City of Toronto was called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consensus to sever properties, create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, in the event of an appeal, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee rendered here today, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is, we call each item in the order listed in the agenda. We're starting off with item number nineteen, I believe, this afternoon. And first we'll deal with, there is a deferral request, at least one that we'll deal with at the outset. Where an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with a presentation if they desire. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair, should they wish to address the committee. The committee may ask questions, and then take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. The clock is up on the board, and someone will comment when you're reaching five minutes, and at that point, I'll ask you to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please start out by clearly stating your name and address for the record, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent goes first and makes their presentation to the committee on an application as people in opposition present to speak. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application of being substantially revised in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate, and that all those invited entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers have finished, the applicant or agent is given an opportunity to respond with their further five minutes to rebut only those issues that were raised with the speakers, and answer any questions that they may have raised, and that will then mark the end of discussion on the matter, and the matter and applications then taken into committee for a decision. Do any of the members, panel, members or staff have any declarations of interest to declare with respect to the matters before us on this afternoon's agenda? No claimant to declare, thank you. The deferral requests, I guess the picking up from this morning, where we had four in the morning's agenda. We have, I believe, one item on the community planning deferral consolidated list, which is item thirty-one A and B. So perhaps we'll start off with that. That is twelve eighteen and twelve eighteen A and B, respectively. Application, application number thirty-one A and B. And it's an application for new detached dwellings in both cases with seven variances. And we have, the request is for D four. Staff just have to check what's D four. What's, so this is, six is when the applicant asks for the deferral. What's D four? And we'll have to get okay, the, that's right, the, we have a new speaker on this. It's Erda, the owner of the property, not the agent Pavlo Subashi, who is going to be speaking to the matter of the deferral. So it's item D four?
Hello?
Yes?
Hi, this is Erda Hidari talking. I'm the homeowner for twelve eighteen A and B Islington. The reason that we are, well, that the application is being deferred is there was a mistake in the zoning notices that were created. So when the lots were split, there was a subsection at the very front that was taken by the City of Toronto, and those were unfortunately included in the lot coverage, as well as the lot area calculations, and they shouldn't have been. So the zoning has been revised, but because there wasn't enough time to reissue all of the notices, we have been deferred to the December eighth hearing.
Okay, so you've already been given a specific date, that's good. I see number four is in order for a revised public notice to be issued to address revisions to the proposals. Since, I guess, your list of variances are wrong, it sounds like there's, it's more at seven variance is going to actually go down. So I guess we have no choice but to defer because of the notice issue, so that you have a proper, the correct notice goes out.
Yeah.
Okay, so it makes sense that you speak instead of your agent, because we're not going to be dealing on the merits now. And you, that's good, you have a specific date. So members, unless you have any questions, can we have a motion to defer this matter to December the eighth in order for notice to be recirculated? Rise public notice.
I'll move a motion to defer, Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick, second there for that motion.
Let me see the second.
Thank you, all in favor. Okay, I assume, I can't see, but I assume everyone's hands is up to the matter is deferred. We'll see you back here in December, which may be a colder day than today.
See you then.
February the eighth, and be well, have a good day. Okay, so that's item thirty-one. I don't believe there were any other deferral requests, Mr. Carvelino or Adam, Mr. Wells, on the matters before us this afternoon?
I don't have anything on file, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let me just switch, okay, so our first item we can do then is item number nineteen forty through forty-three Thistle Road. So let's move, move to that bookmark. It's a second for a second story above the existing dwelling, the two-story side addition with two variances. Urban Forestry looking for conditions one and two. I see all we have is support from the next-door neighbor at forty-five and MetroLinks advisory letter. And the speaker for this application is
the speaker, Mr. Chair, is Linda Rodriguez.
Linda Rodriguez, okay. Good afternoon. You're the agent for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, my name is Lena Rodriguez, and my address is five oh four Perth Avenue. Twenty-seven.
Okay, seems very straightforward, your variances, and there's no one written in other than urban forestry. You're okay, I assume, with, your client's okay with complying with urban forestry conditions one and two?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just see if, I see you also have support from the next-door neighbor. So let's see if members have any questions for you, or if not, someone's ready to weigh in with a motion. Okay, members, I can't, there, I got a grid now, seeing at least some of you.
Mr. Chair, Stan, Mark, I'm, there's no questions, I'm willing to suggest a motion that we move for approval, subject to forestry conditions one and two. I find the application to be minor and meeting the court test.
Thank you, sir. Second there for Mr. Merrick's motion.
Sorry, I'll second, but I just want to confirm the forestry conditions. I had down two and three. So I just want to have a look at them. But it was, sorry, it's one and two, sorry, my bad.
No problem.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, I take it that's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Okay, item number twenty, twenty-one oh five Lawrence Avenue West. We have two speakers, Eddie Perez and Mr. Roy Brown, who spent the morning with us and was listed as a speaker on item number eighteen, which is also Lawrence Avenue's address. So we'll hear first from Ms. Perez, but let's just do a brief
No conditions.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair. It was, it was cut off at the bottom, but at the top no, because then there's two. I know, but on the top, on the top of the next page of the participant list, there's also a Carol Anne Brown. She's nuts.
Yes. Right, so I guess one of, only one of them will be speaking, Roy or Carol Anne. But let's hear first from Eddie Perez. After I do the introduction briefly, it's an application for an attached garage and storage structure and to convert the dwelling into two units. There are two variances, the setback from the front lot line and the distance to the east lot line, that's all we have. And again, we have ravines and natural feature protection advising they're okay with this, and MetroLinks advisory. Other than that, we have nothing on this application on file. Mr. Perez, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, Chairman and Committee members. I'm here on behalf of the owners. We're at five thirty-seven Rogers Roads, and we're the designers. As you can see, it's a very simple application. We only have the two variances. We're pretty well removing an existing garage that's in pretty bad shape, and we're replacing it with a new one. Pretty well, it's the exact same location. And as you said earlier, we just have the two variances, which is the front yard setback and the side yard, which is an existing situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Perez at this time?
I have a question, it's Stan. Mr. Perez, you're also asking to convert to two units? Is that correct?
That's correct.
On your drawings, I see you have existing situation, but I don't see any proposed.
Well, the proposed kitchen is on the first floor. The kitchen was already on the basement prior.
Okay, but you didn't submit any drawings showing that, though, right?
Well, it should have been. Can you put up the drawings? I think it should be on there, maybe. But there is going to be one kitchen in the first, one kitchen in the basement.
Well, that's what I assumed, but I don't know, maybe I missed it, but I couldn't find them.
I'm trying to look at the plans, and they're very fuzzy. Using the city-issue computer, which I usually don't use. But, so do you have staff, do we have plans showing the the before and after, or more importantly, the after showing a second unit in the basement with a kitchen?
The kitchen was previously we had in the basement, now we're proposing the one on the first floor.
Okay, do you have a drawing number you can refer me to?
Well, it would be on the first floor plan, unless we, can you put up the first floor plan? Would be A four.
Okay, clear on those.
I don't think these are the latest ones, because we had one where we put proposed kitchen in, and the proposed kitchen was on the first floor. But we're going to have a kitchen on the first and a kitchen in the basement. I got, I got permits for this for a second-story addition years ago, and we had the kitchen.
I just, there's, there's no illustration of what you're proposing, that's one thing.
Kitchen is in the front portion of the house. Proposed kitchen. Whether, when you first come in, that's where the kitchen is. The front door.
Okay, Stan, are you okay? And Mr. Carvelino, are we okay with getting, having this application approved? If we happen to we require the plans showing it, the two units in the dwelling, or if so, do we actually have that? Mr. Perez seems to feel that, you know, he always does a very thorough job in his application, so.
I'm looking at the notice, and there's no reference to the permitted second suite. There's just to the form, the altered dwelling from the front lot line and the east side lot line. So what he's proposing, whether whether it's not a variance.
No, in the purpose of the application, it says to
he's, he's I don't find it in the plans either. But it's something that he's allowed to have. He's not asking for a variance from it.
If it's not a variance, why is it even stated in the purpose then?
Yeah, it's for convenience, I guess.
Especially since the work has been done to an attached garage and storage, not and not, you know, nothing in the construction for that, or maybe just internal, anyway.
Yeah.
Proceed on this relatively
I just wanted to clarify that before we get into a discussion from the neighbors, perhaps, of what's permitted and what's not. So I just wanted to get a clarification right up front.
Okay, so I guess we have that, we can move on. Let's hear from either Mr. or Mrs. Brown.
May I speak for just a sec? I opened my file, I have the kitchen showing on mine. For some reason, maybe I attached the wrong ones when I sent it. But I have the kitchen showing on mine. It's at the front, when you first come into, it would be on your left side, right beside the stairs. That's where the kitchen is. I couldn't, because I can't show you, because we don't have a camera, but I do have it here with the kitchen on it. Okay.
Okay, we can move on. Okay, let's hear from either Mr. or Mrs. Brown.
In this case, Mr. Chair, it'll be Roy Brown.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Roy Brown. I'm one of the property owners at twenty-one oh three Lawrence West, which is the site of the property in the application. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm pleased that the owner of this subject property is finishing his renovations. What is being proposed should bring the rental portion into compliance. It will make the view from the street more aesthetically pleasing. It would also remedy an issue with the undermining of the retaining wall between our two driveways that was caused by a previous owner. I do have concerns. There are differences in the land elevations between our two properties. They're not fully shown in the reference files linked to the application. The hard copy of the public hearing notice I received does contain a map of the general area showing changes in the elevations across both properties. The proposed plans do not give me any indication that differences in land elevations between the two properties have been adequately considered. I would have expected notation of shoring or retaining walls that could prevent my land or structures from being compromised to these changes in elevations. I would like to oppose the request to adjust the minimal side yard setback to two point two, three meters for a number of reasons. First, expanding the width of the garage to the required, to requested setback will create the illusion that is a double garage from the street. Maximizing the garage footprint would still only provide for a single car garage and expanded storage space. Two, if the side variance setback is allowed, the final space between the proposed garage wall and my garage wall will be point six four meters. That will not provide enough room to do any maintenance work to either wall between the properties. If the proposals held to the point five meter setback, there will be approximately point nine meters between the buildings. Three, the allowable setback of point five meters would allow for any necessary shoring or retaining walls to protect my lands and structures from collapsing, which is a major concern. I feel it's necessary to point out examples of errors and omissions in the file C A plans prior to addressing the proposed height and length of the garage. For example, page A one labels the majority of your rear, majority of the rear of the yard as existing soft area, whereas photographs provided by the applicant clearly show that a large concrete pad and interlocking pavers exist. Page A three labels the front room as an existing family room. It is my understanding that there is a kitchen in the eastern portion of that room, along with a kitchen window in the east wall that have been omitted from the drawings. These examples leave me wondering what else could be missing. Both page A five and page A seven show the proposed garage roofline as being above the existing roofline, which is indicated by the dotted lines. Page six shows the proposed roofline as being below the existing roofline. The latter creates an illusion that the proposed garage is shorter than the existing. The same diagram shows two levels of finished grade with no indication of the existing step grade on my property. There are no indications that the two grades are going to come together at the property line in a manner that is both aesthetic and structurally sound. I would now like to speak about sunlight and gardens. When we first purchased our home in nineteen ninety-four, one of our requirements was it should have a suitable location for gardening. We purchased knowing that the eastern sun was blocked by a two-plus-story brick wall, but had full sun exposure and partial western exposure. Then the city allowed an apartment building to the south, which blocked the sun to her garden. We moved the garden to the west side, where we were able to get good sun for a number of years. That is, until we asked the city to intervene when our current neighbor was building in addition to his rear shed. After that incident, our neighbor did a number of things that further blocked the sun from our relocated garden. We then moved the vegetable garden to the raised beds at the rear of our garage. The proximity of the proposed garage, proposed garage, combined with its additional height and length, will block sunlight to our curtain garden, as well as to our kitchen and bathroom windows located on the west side of our home. This will have a negative effect on the open spatial environment of our home that we have previously enjoyed. I asked the committee if it is possible that this structure could be scaled back away from the property line in such a way as to not have the negative impacts that I presented. This brings my presentation to an end. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Brown, and I'm sorry for having you have to attend this morning. Members, any questions for Mr. Brown?
I have one question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, do you know what the, what your setback is of your garage on the west side to the other, to the neighbor's property?
Yes, I do. It's actually shown in the, in the survey, I believe it's point four two, off the top of my head.
Thank you.
If I can find the survey.
Good question. So you're not, you know, he's you're not getting much more towards that open area for maintenance and scaffolding or whatever else, you know?
I'm honestly, yeah, I'm getting
It's an existing condition that you find yourself in, and you have a, what do you, that's where your garage is, right? And that's why you said if it's, it'll look like a double garage, there's not enough room between them. But so you're also, you know, part of that, that problem, I guess, or you're a lot.
Yes.
You're at points, what did you say, point four three?
Point four two, I believe.
That's what, about a little over a foot and a half, or, you know?
Yeah.
And a point three, two, three, they're looking to go pretty close, what is that? But less, but we'll hear from Mr. Perez. And why typically they put them aside, because then otherwise there's room, if there's enough room to do, you know, typical maintenance in terms of where this old garage was, where it's being relocated, if any way, but that's the issue. Anyways, Mr. Merrick, you have the, you have any other questions? Or you've been
I do, but my other question is for Mr. Perez, but I'll ask it now, if that's okay. And I just, but my question is, what's the current setback of that garage to the east now? Anyway, that's my question, when he has a chance.
Exactly. Well, it's going to be time for him to rebut anyway now, so. But is he moving it closer? Is that where it is? Perhaps, Mr., you know, we can hear about that.
Sorry, Chair, I have a question as well for the neighbor. The current grading situation, you're about a foot higher, would it be safe to say? I'm just looking at the survey plan. It looks like at the property line, it shows us one hundred point three seven, and then in about the middle of the front of yours, it's one hundred point seven, which is
That would be at the front, but as we go towards the rear, there's, I believe, about a six-foot drop.
Six feet at the rear.
Yeah, there's a substantial change between the front and rear of the properties. As an example, my front door opens up to the street. The rear door in my basement opens up to the lower, the lower backyard.
Your probably has a six-foot drop to the back, and I assume the neighbor's property, Mr. Perez's client has the same, but we're talking, what, is there a great change between your property and twelve oh three? Or twelve oh five?
Yes.
So that's about, but that's not a six feet.
At the front, at the
At the front. It's a foot at the front. There's a further drop at the back. I don't really know how much, because it's been blocked in by a fence, a covered fence or covered porch since as long as I remember.
Okay, but when you mentioned the six-foot elevation change, we're talking about from the front of the property to the back of the property?
Yes, yes. Okay.
I'm more concerned with, with the relationship between the two properties. So currently, it looks like from this survey plan, the existing gradges are point two five five and point four one and four two from the property. Yours is point four two, and, and the applicant's is point two five five. And he's proposing to go to point two three, which is worse.
Yeah, he's moving closer.
You're not in favor of that reduced side yard setback? Correct?
You're asking me?
He'd like to have
Okay, no, I'm not in favor of the reduced
And, and there's no sort of permissions that either one of you have given to each other to enter onto each other's properties for maintenance or anything like that?
No, no. No, there are no permissions granted. Historically, there was two members of, that were related, two property owners who were related. Whether they had any personal agreements, I think, when disruption changes happened, when it was the old city of York, and things were a little bit more liberal.
Okay, no, no, that's, those are all the questions I have, thank you.
So my question, Mr. Brown, is currently where the garage, there is an existing garage being demolished, correct? Or he's demolishing your garage in order to build this new one?
Yes.
So that one, is there currently enough room to go between, whether, whether it's legal or trespassing? There's currently to go to do both walls?
I didn't get between, but if I needed to do any maintenance to the roofs to get up to the roof, I would have to easier access it from the front or the rear of the property.
Okay.
The same thing to clean my eaves troughs, because it's the roof lines above my eaves troughs.
Okay, and, and you then said something about that you'd like there to be a certain distance between the press, you'd like the situation to approve prob, or to
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place. The city of York approved a large apartment building, so I have a very, I wouldn't have a legal one meter. I'd have to look and measure it, but the east side of my property is one point one, one point two meters. I can go look and measure it. Or you can, you can't see from the diagrams, because the map doesn't show my building.
No, but to decide, you share with the subject property before us, you said that it's point, you're a point four to the lot line.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, anyway. Yeah, okay. Anyway, let's go back to, uh, uh, Mr. Perez for his rebuttal and, uh, perhaps he can answer the first question you had. Or the question you had for him about, uh, why you placed it there? And can you place it, uh? You not agree that there'd be some benefit to be able to maintain the walls and not make it so close that, uh, no one can get between the two? Mr. Perez, back to you.
Hi, again, uh, I spoke to the, the owner. He's, uh, he's okay with, uh, bringing it to point four zero. So we can match pretty well what the neighbor has as well. And as per the grade in the front. Now, if you put pictures up that have been presented to the committee. It has a down slope, but we're gonna have a positive slope going forward. Uh, right now we have ninety nine, uh, point seven, one in front. It's going, it's going up to one hundred point zero, one, if you look at the elevation. So we're gonna have a positive slope to the sidewalk instead of a negative slope. And like I said, we can bring it to point four zero, so we can change that one. Uh, variance from point two, three to point four, zero. And, uh, and the situation, it's, it's pre-existing. It's, uh, garages are there. They're in bad shape. The owner wants to build a new garage. And, uh, to accommodate his needs and I, I feel with the variances are very minor. And, uh, it meets the four tests. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. Uh, members, any follow-up questions for Mr. Perez, Mr. Brown, or someone ready to make a, uh, motion?
I'm willing to go with a motion. Uh, thank you for that amendment. I feel better. Didn't feel right, but it's getting worse than what it is currently, so. With that amendment to variance two, uh, I'd like to propose that we. Find the application to be minor and would like to propose approval with no condition.
With the revision to variance two, obviously. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kameric. I have a second for Mr. Kameric's motion. Ms. McCloskey, thank you. All in favor? Uh, I don't have visuals, so please confirm that everyone's hands is up and then it's unanimous. Mr. Palmer and Ms. Riddick, you're okay with that, this?
Yes, no.
No, so it carries four to one. Neil, you're opposed.
I am.
Okay, most carries four to one, uh, as revised. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next application is item number twenty one seventy five Mon Creek Drive. It's for a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have a revised. Highlighted, uh, yellow to show changes or revise page for the agenda. And so there were five variances. There are now three and two of those have been revised as well. We have revised plans and emails and cover letter regarding the revisions and forestry memo. Forestry is looking for a denial. Of, I don't know if all of the variances or we can check. Um, and we have four letters of support and that's all we have. And the speaker for this application, we have only one Kyle Condra, uh, agent for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, before we get into that, this is the other one that we have a potential notice issue that we need to clarify.
Okay.
Paul, if you could chime in?
Paul or Phil?
Phil, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so variance number one for the, uh, let me just bring that up. For the, um, lot coverage permitted went out as two eighteen. But in reality, it's one sixty point zero, six. So it's the, again, for information purposes, the operative portion of the bylaw is the percentage. But the number that went out was higher than what was supposed to be. So it actually makes the variant seem smaller. But in reality, it's a hundred and sixty point zero, six meter squared. So if committee feels that, um. There is no notice issue, then you can direct staff and we'll change the, the decision in the minutes to reflect the actual number.
Okay, and then again, that is shown now on the revised, uh, sheet.
Correct.
Wrong in the original. And, but this, this revised copy doesn't go to the public, but again, just like exactly like the other one. Uh, I would, my position would be, I hear what others say, that the operative with people are gonna look at is. The thirty four point five, three and or the, and the thirty three, what the permitted is. That it's not, it couldn't have been two eighteen, that's higher than the one seventy. So the one sixty, but I think people would have. If they wanted to chime in, they would have, what was operative is the percentages. At least that's what I look at. Anyone else comment? You think we're okay to proceed?
I would concur with what you just said, Mr. Chair.
Okay, perhaps you want to make a motion to see if the others agree too? We can proceed.
If we need a motion, I, I, I would, uh, move that, uh, we proceed.
And staff will take that direction.
Okay, second, we need a second for that. I assume everyone's okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so now we have, uh. Revisions to these, what's before us. So that's, that's all we have. We have, uh. Well, let's hear from the agent, Mr. Kendra, is why these revisions were made and, uh. Whether it's a result of community, uh, discussions with community planning and we can go from there. So, Mr. Kendra?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, everyone. So, yeah, I mean, when we submitted the application, we heard back from the city planning department and they had some concerns with, uh, size of the building and some of the variances. Uh, we went back, uh, back and forth with them for a few times and made some substantial revisions, as you can see. Um, so eventually the planning department came back and they are generally in support of this revised application. Uh, we also noticed, uh, uh, the forestry, um, recommendation to deny. Uh, I had a discussion with them as well. Um, uh, we do not, we, we're not asking to remove any trees, uh, or injure any trees at this point. Um, eventually the discussion went. Uh, to a point that they said that should the committee approve the application, they will look at different alternatives. For them to support the application. So I think that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, because they're, they're opposed to variance number one, the coverage of, uh, thirty five point one, nine. Whereas it's interesting, they recite the same, the same issue here. They didn't catch the mistake and they're obviously realized what they were talking about. So it's interesting. So the difference from thirty three to thirty five point one, nine, again. They say, they just say it will result in the permanent loss of viable growing space for healthy, viable protected tree number one. So. And they don't seem to be saying it's getting injured the tree. They're just saying in the future it has less room to grow, which is very interesting. They're not saying that this tree is gonna be what you're proposing, your extra coverage. And it has to be the incremental amount of the coverage. So staff? Mr. Carvelino?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I'm just, on this issue of the, uh, the lack of viable growing space, I guess what they're saying is if we, if this additional coverage is given. It's not that there isn't room to put a tree. They're saying the existing tree that's already there. Won't have enough room to thrive, or I don't understand this, this, their position here.
I, I've seen it interpreted both ways. Um, sometimes they object to extra coverage or G F A because it reduces the amount of viable speak to plant new trees. And other times they're actually more specific and the reduction in area. Um, they feel sometimes is harmful to the tree when it's taken away for them to thrive. So, um, really it's, it's a question for the committee to, um. Try to understand what kind of an impact the, the building and the area that they're proposing will have on the existing trees.
And we don't know the circumference of that particular tree, number one, or is it in the report? I'm just looking now at the support letters, which are actually very faint. I can't even read, see where they're from, but I wanted to see if the adjacent neighbors had weighed in and support. Um, but if I go, we go back now to this memo from urban forestry.
Yeah, there's a picture of the street tree.
Yeah. Oh, okay, the street tree. But is the street tree being impacted by the additional coverage? It seems to be a, you know, you're, it's one of these boulevard things with the sidewalks. It's not like they're gonna go over the sidewalk, so.
I agree, because they refer to the, um, the tree in question as tree number one. So it's in, uh, and, and then the picture. Shows tree number one.
Right, and that tree number one can possibly be affected by its ability to thrive. By anything they would do on the lot, which I would take it is to the right of the sidewalk. Uh, you know, somewhat and even further back. And is there a front yard, uh, front yard setback variance here? No.
It has been eliminated, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so the question is, I don't see how at all that this tree is impacted by anything that you would want to do on that lot. Especially since you don't have a front yard setback issue or variance.
Yeah, yes, and the reduced coverage as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, and then you, yes, you did bring the coverage down to thirty, down as well. So that's on the, in the, uh, the amended. So again, before or after, I have no idea why this shows up as a refusal report and it's not the first one today that, uh, has taken a. Time in trying to figure out what urban forestry was thinking of. Okay, and, uh, members, any, any questions for, uh, for Mr. Kendra? Uh, or based on what I view, does anyone agree or not disagree with what I am with this? This photo of this tree and how it cannot be affected, uh, by any construction on the lot? And again, does anyone have any questions then, or is, from Mr. Kendra? In addition to, uh, that, or is someone ready for a motion?
I'm good to go with a motion unless anyone has questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, the front yard setback was eliminated.
Yeah, um, yeah, based on the revised submission, um, I believe it meets the four tests and would like to. Move approval, subject to forestry condition number one with regards to that city tree in the boulevard.
Thank you. Yeah, interesting. They didn't even argue in the alternative on that. They just usually didn't say one and five, they said five. Anyway, okay, thank you, uh, for that motion. Do I have a second or for that? Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. All in favor? Uh, I don't have visuals, so please confirm if that's unanimous.
Uh, yeah, I'm in support.
Is no one opposed? Sophia Riddick, you're in, you're in support as well? Sophia?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so it's unanimous. Uh, thank.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kendra. Okay, next item, and then number twenty two, thirty Seacraft Crescent. I think we're back to Mr. Perez. This is an application for a, um, to construct a second story addition. And, um. Above the existing garage to extend the existing attached garage and a previous committee of adjustment application approved variances leading to side yard setback. And driveway width. That was back in May twenty twenty one. And there are three variances and that's all we have. Mr. Perez, welcome back.
Hello, again, uh, chairman and committee members, uh, we're before you again with, uh, this project because the client, uh, realized that he needed a. A longer garage to make it a tandem, so he can park two cars comfortably. So we extended the back just a touch. And, yeah, he also needed a second story to, for a rec room. Uh, as you can see, things nowadays, most people stay home and that, so. He needed that extra space, so that's why we're before you again. And is the variances are minor in nature, as you can see. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, so they already built, uh, what they got approved in May twenty twenty one. They just need a longer garage.
Yeah, they started building some, uh, already.
Okay, okay. Uh, members, any questions for Mr. Perez? And if not, is someone ready for a motion?
I, I'm good to go if no one else is, um. Believe the application meets the four tests. Uh, it's definitely minor. Uh, would like to move approval with no conditions.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kameric. Second for that?
Mishe will second.
Thank you. All in favor? When I visual, I assume it's unanimous, otherwise let me know. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. We'll see.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Item twenty three, two oh one, Aline Avenue. It's to construct a two-story rear addition and an attached garage. There were six. We have a revised agenda sheet for the, uh, you know, notice, new sheet. Uh, one variance has been eliminated. There were six. There are now five and two of those have been revised. And we have, uh, the revised zoning notice and plans. We have an email from the applicant regarding the revisions. And that's all we have. There's urban forestry, sorry, urban forestry number one. Condition and nothing else, no other comments from neighbors or city staff. The speaker for this application is Barry, uh, Barry Goldman.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Since you've got the revised application here and I see it in front of me, it is accurate. We've. Eliminated one of the requested variances, number five. And reduced variances, number four and six. I can make a presentation if you like, or answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, let's just see if, uh, members have any questions for you rather straightforward and there's no one here with any concerns from the city or area neighbors. Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Goldman, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? And, uh, let's take it you're okay with, uh, urban forestry condition number one.
Uh, yes, no problem.
Okay.
Um, if there's no questions, uh, Mishe here, I'll, uh, move to approve the. Um, prove this application, uh, believe it meets four tests in minor nature.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCloskey. Second for that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. All in favor?
Uh, just, just so we don't miss forestry condition one, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
Yeah.
So, yeah, separate to, uh, room for a shooting edition one. Thanks, Tim.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number twenty four, one nodding hill gate. An application to instruct a new. Attached dwelling with an attached garage. Let me just open this. A new front porch and a new rear deck. There are, uh, six variances. We have, uh, number forty four Dale Grove opposed, uh, issue seems. Various you seem to be construction related for the most part with mention of the placement of the, uh. Lot, uh. The driveway on the, or being on the flanking street, um. In the additional materials, we have transportation conditions of approval and, uh, urban forestry looking for additions two and three. Speaker on this application is Sanjeev Kumar for the agent for the applicant, as well as we have, uh. The resident who wrote in at forty four Dale Grove, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Martin, as well as the neck, the neighbor right across the street at number two, nodding hill gate. Uh, Virginia Ricardo. So let's start off, uh, welcome to Mr. Kumar, the agent, uh, for the applicant.
Good afternoon, uh, committee chair and members. Uh, my name is Sanjeev Kumar and I is in for one not angle gate. And that's taking the relief for requested.
Sure, uh, we have people here and, uh, with concerns or in opposition, so. Thank you to make, uh, a presentation to committee.
Uh, uh, we are, we are proposing to construct a new detached dwelling and, uh, with the. Attached garage and the front porch and the new rear. Yard deck to, uh, demolishing the existing dwelling. Uh, the purpose of the plan to maximize the use of the backyard at present, the client is not able to use the backyard in very limited use. And also he's facing what adjusting, uh, driveway with the site. Line obstruction due to digesting tree and pension power to the sidewalk. Which is the safety concerns for the traffic flow. That's the reason we are proposing, uh, driveway on the other side of the Dale Grove Crescent.
Yeah, you're a corner lot here, so you're fronting on the Dale Grove. You have a Dale, right, of a Nottingham Gate address.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um. Okay, uh, so, uh, thank you. That's what you're, uh, proposing to do. Uh, in terms of the lot constraints, that's why you, oh, I was gonna ask, so you, have you consulted with the neighbors as point, uh, and this point, uh, six, five, six or five, four, I think you have here? Is that compatible for the neighborhood?
No, I didn't go in contact with the neighbors, so, uh.
No, no, I'm saying you're asking for a floor space index of point five.
Yeah, I understand. For that, uh, for, uh, space index as well as, uh, we, I revised the drawing. Uh, to suit the joining by requirements. As per the, uh, and joining, uh, review. Yeah. So I'm tying most of the items, uh, but, but you can see on the site plan, the setbacks and the bubble mark.
And perhaps, but, but so you're, the, the floor space index, you're proposing a point four, five, four, five, four times a lot, two hundred and seventy five. square meters, point nine, is is reasonable for the area in terms of a uh a house that's being modified with an addition.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear any questions for uh Mr. Kumar before we go on to hear from the neighbors. If none, okay, so we'll hear from the first neighbor Gary or Barbara Martin, and perhaps we can get their letter on the on the board and uh just before they who's speaking, Mr. and Mrs. uh Barton?
Mr. Chair, it'll be Gary Martin speaking.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out to you before you get started that no uh uh for better or worse, our role here is to deal with the approval of the build form from planning perspective. Uh, obviously, everyone realizes there's a big mess, noise, everything else from dealing with construction is happening all over the city. And there's nothing we can do about that. Uh, you mentioned there's going to be large construction. This goes on all over the city. It's uh some people have or be in the neighborhood where is less of this going on than others, whether you're in Forest Hill or Rosedale or anywhere else in the city, there's constant construction going on. So we would ask you to kindly uh restrict your comments to the actual build forum and how that is not compatible and your issues with that.
Okay.
Uh, and and just to say, if you do have issues during construction, whether with this or any other matter, you call three one one. There is a redress. People can't just do what they want. If there's garbage and debris, if they're working beyond the normal business hours for construction, then there is a process to deal with those issues, but unfortunately, it's not us.
Okay.
Just build forms.
Okay, I have four major concerns. Um, I I guess first and foremost is the application is being made by somebody who doesn't live with the address and has no interest in the community. Um, what is uh the second concern is that um this is zoned as a residential area according to uh the Toronto bylaw. And the applicant uh at Notting Hill Gate is uh looking for uh commercial and allowances on his property. He runs a business there and there's quite often uh three or four large trucks parked in front of the um, the house as well as a large trailer that is usually filled with uh refuse. Um, the third con- concern we have uh or not really concerned, but uh thing to point out is that uh other neighbors have concerned uh have concerns much as we do, uh but they can't be here because of worse schedules or in fact, uh, we have pulled the neighbors and some of them in fact were were not not were not notified. We also um uh have contention with the fact that uh what um uh Notting Hill Gate is calling um minor variances, uh in fact, they are ma- major variances that um cause a lot of disruption in the community.
Can you elaborate on what those disruptions in the community are?
Um, there's the there's the issue of um the driveway uh being on um on Dale Grove uh very close to an intersection. Um, there's quite often pedestrian traffic. If there's a school nearby and quite often there are school groups that 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 come by the school here. Um, right presently, there is um uh uh uh, you know, a lot of um uh um the trucks and the trailer blocking traffic uh so that when you go on Notting Hill Gate, you can't see oncoming traffic. You kind of have to sneak out um to to swing wide to um, you know, to see what where oncoming traffic is. Um are also our other concern is the driveway right across the street from our our driveway as well.
Proposed driveway.
The proposed driveway.
That your your driveway is across from it?
Yes, it would be. It would be.
Okay, and that is uh why? Because if you're both backing out at the same time, or why is that?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's also very close to the corner of the
Yeah, okay. Do you have you seen? I don't know if you've seen, we did receive, and I think I said in my opening, in the additional materials, late arriving materials, and if you check the city uh data center, we did receive comments and conditions from transportation. Which I'm gonna ask uh Mr. Kumar, I believe he's aware of those, so he would have to comply with those conditions. Traffic, transportation, planning of the city has looked at this application, and they've recommended conditions of approval, which perhaps we can get up on the screen. Um okay, so does anyone have any que- thank you for your submissions, uh, this uh Mr. Martin. Um and thank you for appreciating that the issue of the construction will be a major concern to the people is not something we deal with. Um, anyone have any questions, or if not, we'll go on to the next speaker. Okay, the next speaker is the neighbor across at the number two, Notting uh Notting Hill Gate. Let's look at the location map. And that is Virginia Ricardo.
Hello, uh, it's Virginia Ricardo, two Notting Hill Gate. Um so we live right across the street. We've been here for twenty-two, over twenty-two years. Uh, I'm just concerned about the fact that the house will be switched around. So right now, there's only number one and number two on Notting Hill. And so we look out currently on the front of the house, and we will be looking out on the side of the house. And I'm not sure what that view will be like, as in, will there be windows? Will there be just a solid wall? Um and I believe the owner of the house is currently renting the property out. But I don't believe those people will be staying there because they're building elsewhere, so I'm not sure if the house will be up for sale or you know, what what uh going forward it will be, but I'm just concerned about the switch in the layout of the property.
Okay, correction. Right now, the front of the house faces uh you, right?
Yes.
You face that, you face them. You don't face the same way as your neighbors. Seventy-three Dale Grove, you face, you face them as well, right? The front of your house faces the front of their house?
Uh, you mean you're talking to me?
Yes.
Yes, so the front of our house and their houses is facing each other.
Map up uh staff, location map. So you're you're facing them, and you're saying now they're going to reconfigure it, so now the house is going to fail face Dale Grove uh next to their number sixty-three Dale Grove. Kind of confusing the street numbering there rather. Um, wait, look, so you're just number one and two. There you are, right across. You're facing, so you're not facing your neighbor. You're not in line with your neighbor at seventy-one. You're facing uh the applicant, uh, Mr. Kumar's client, number one.
That's correct.
And they're doing the same, gonna flip it around now, so now you're gonna be looking at the side elevation, which they should have the plans uh in the package showing that side elevation, and perhaps we can see that as well. Um so that is certainly a change. But when we're here is we look at the variances uh as well, but there are conditions from transportation, as I mentioned, to Mr. and Mrs. Martin. Anyway, would you like to continue? I sort of interrupted you there, so uh you are, your concern is again, you're gonna be looking at a completely different situation. You're gonna be looking at the side of this newly built not at the front.
That's correct.
Okay, so please continue. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's uh, I don't have much more. Um, it's just uh my husband mentioned the same thing. He was concerned of looking at a solid brick wall. I'm not sure what the side elevation view is, so we saw the the proposed plan, but not obviously the side elevation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone have any questions for Ms. Ricardo? Members? Or for Mr. Martin?
Side elevations are on the drawings.
Yeah. Yeah, perhaps staff could uh accommodate by putting that up on the screen so that uh
There's windows showing.
The Ricardos can see that.
So we're looking for the north elevation.
We're bringing it up short shortly here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's what you're gonna be looking at.
Okay.
Some looks like uh, you know, upper window, uh, two windows on the main floor. There we go. And then one little one in the basement, now whether it will be fencing or that doesn't show right now. But that, but the look, what you'll be letting there, it looks like there's some dormer windows in the roof section, but that's the plan. So perhaps also Mr. Kumar can elaborate on that and explain why the decision was made to uh switch the uh uh where the front and the size of the house are. Uh, I assume that's at his uh, that was at their option uh in terms of as long as they comply with otherwise with planning. Okay, so um any questions for either the two neighbors, or we'll go back to Mr. Kumar at this point for his rebuttal? And perhaps, I you know, again, it's not a real planning issue. There was some mention of a commercial use or parking uh vehicles or trailers for uh the owner's business, but perhaps uh that's not really, as they say, a planning concern. But is there, this is be, this is a single family home being built for a a family's residential use, correct? Mr. Kumar?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we
You can see the site plan is from the property line. We are complying the joining by law for the corner lot is three meter away. My footprint of the my foundation will be three pit, three meter away from the property line. And it'd be not for the commercial use and the uh existing owner is living in apartment. He wants to come and build a house to settle here with his family. Uh, right now he's renting, but his proposal to leave over there. And we put the fence, we can comply the uh urban forestry condition two and three also.
No.
Yeah. And just because of uh the existing condition, he cannot utilize is most of the lot area, so his focus to maximize the uses of the backyard for the backyard amenities.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So he gets a better backyard by
Yeah.
in the uh, make it more front to back rather than facing uh
Yes, yes.
For two snorting hill. Because otherwise
It's committed to leave over there. There's no question for uh like a commercial use or whatever the neighbor concerned about that.
Yeah, it's a tenant who's currently renting. It's subject to
Right now, he's living in apartment. He wants to switch over from there to the new building.
Okay, but I'm saying now I understand the rationale for moving the front to the backs and the sides is because the current location doesn't give you a uh
Yeah.
The bowl, it gives you a big side yard, but not a big backyard. Okay, and as long, so you're you're
Yeah, complying, complying all the joining uh requirements, uh, the three meter away from the Notting Hill uh property line is a quite bit of distance.
Right, you're 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 generally other than your F S, your F S I. You don't have height. You don't have
No issues, everything we comply as per.
Yes, okay. Members, any questions for Mr. Kumar? Uh, or is someone ready to make a motion?
Start of just harping on us on on the forestry theme. Um forestry is asking for a cash-in lieu in addition to protecting existing trees. That always confuses me. Because if there's existing trees, why are they asking for cash and move? But anyway, just a comment. Otherwise, if no one has any questions, I'm willing to uh move a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Kamerk.
Yeah, I I believe uh overall, the uh application meets the four tests and um is desirable and uh minor, I would therefore like to move approval subject to transportation conditions. I believe there are three of them and subject to the two forestry conditions, two and three.
Thanks, accepting this.
Sorry?
We had accepting those condition.
Yeah, it's it's not, okay, we you shouldn't be, you should be muted. We're in a motion now. Okay, I think it's fine. We have a second for that?
Yes, I will second.
You're all in favor? Okay, I can't see Sophia. I assume it's unanimous approval.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kumar. Thank you to the neighbors as well. We'll see you again. Okay, next application is item number twenty-five, one forty-five Woodward Avenue. It's an application to instruct the third story addition to include an additional six dwelling units for a total of seventeen dwelling units to be provided. Uh, there are uh two variances. Uh, sorry, there are five variances. Um there's three letters of opposition. Planning is recommending refusal, that the zoning by law amendment would be more appropriate application for this proposal, that the existing eleven units are considered legal non-conforming. And uh, in the additional materials, we have supporting materials from the applicant, a letter of support from the neighbor at one forty-three right next door, and opposition from the tenant to twenty-two year tenant uh in a second uh with no address. Uh, and that's where we have the speaker or the applicant is um Giorgio Frasca agent, as well as then we have uh the neighbor at one forty-three apartment two, one forty-five and two, two, looks like two tenants. One hasn't given their three tenants from the building.
Mr. Chair and members, I'd like to bring to your attention that everybody but Wayne Steele is present on the call at this time. We have reached out to Wayne. We made verbal contact with them, and yet they still haven't joined you, so.
He he's a he's a tenant next door. We have, I guess, the owner next or someone, someone from the next door. I don't know if another tenant or an owner. There's a letter in the supporting materials where someone could open that up and check. If that's the owner of the property. Uh, in any event, community planning uh is is being is against. They're saying seventeen units. The eleven, you would wouldn't be considered eleven. You'd only get three, but it's legal non-conforming, but no, no, just six more units on the third story to be built. Uh, so let's hear from uh Giorgio Fassa, Fasco, agent for the applicant. Welcome.
What?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hear you. You know, it sounds like you're calling from a closet. Increase your volume.
Any better now?
Yeah, a little better.
Giorgio, we're having a very hard time hearing you. Giorgio, was there something covering your microphone? Maybe it sounds like you're just, you're a million miles away from your microphone.
Something in the way? What about now? Any any better?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no.
All right, Giorgio, go ahead.
I just got closer. I just got closer to the uh to the microphone. Hopefully that works matter bit now.
You're gonna have to go closer, even closer. It does still sound like you're far away.
Yeah, I brought it right up against me, so hopefully
You're good now. You're good. You're good.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I was say, I was saying, um, if the moderator can please start bringing up some of the um some of the information that we that we brought, like starting with appendix. Appendix A. So, good afternoon, chairs and committee members. My name is Giorgio Frasco, Frasco's on the planning. Uh, we're the age you're presenting. It was a one forty-five Woodward Avenue. Your opinion of proposed application is minor in nature, it's within the surroundings, and it's in line with the uh
I I can't hear. I've lost audio again.
Giorgio, I'm not sure what's going on on your end, but um, Mr. Chair, maybe we stand this item down for a moment while Giorgio reconnects his system and maybe uh gives a little reset and we can uh come back to his item.
He does occasionally momentarily come in loud and clear, so that's a good, a good uh maybe he doesn't have to log out and we have to wait five minutes. He seems to be coming in when he
What about, what about if I log off and and get onto my phone instead of my PC?
Mr. Chair, may I suggest we stand the file down and we'll continue through our agenda, and we'll come back to Giorgio when he comes back online?
Hey, Giorgio, can you just try this? You just let's see, maybe you won't trail off again.
Okay, I'll give it another shot.
You're you're fine. Keep talking. Just stay close to the microphone.
Okay, I I won't move. Um okay, so uh we note that the application package contains a level of support from a neighbor immediately to the west, as you pointed out. The variances requested are five. We originally had six. We ended up speaking to staff and removed the front your setback. Uh, of the five, two of them stem from the fact that the building is a non-legal moderator, as you can see, appendix six on the uh screen. Um, the the green dot represents our building. The red dots are three, four story buildings up to fifty story, fifteen plus story buildings around the area. The proposed uh uh massing in terms of fight complies with other developments in the neighborhood. Moderator, if you could just go through the pages in appendix A, uh, so that the Uh, so that the members get a chance to see the building in the neighborhoods that corresponds to the red dots that we were, that we were referring to, please. The additional floor that we are proposing is, is the third. The basement has been accounted.
I'm the only one that can't hear him? I can't hear him.
I can't hear him anymore either.
Mr. Chair, may we, I suggest we stand this item down and continue through the agenda while, uh, Gregio, uh, logs out and logs back in.
Better because there are times it's, it's, it's not a connection issue. Because he comes in really loud and then he goes off. So let's do that, but it's not going to be any different unless he has something else on, because he does, if he was constant, that's a different story. Okay, so that's fine. Let's, let's. You're at the end of the agenda. Might as well come back, okay?
Gregio, if you could log out and log back in and authorize the use of your microphone and we'll, we'll get back to your file when you, when you rejoin. Thanks.
Okay, item number twenty-six. Seventy-two Jutland Road, units thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six. And this is an application to permit a retail use. It's one variance, retail use is not permitted, a bridal salon. Again, this is another one like we had this morning, a little more circuit. We have supporting material, plan of survey. Uh, bookmarked, it's under our list of map of units. It's actually a plan of survey. We have a cover letter, planning is requesting refusal. Um, they're saying this is chiefly retail manufacturing use, uh, component is ancillary. Um, and, um. That's the issue here. Uh, they say that it's an ancillary use and again, it gets into the issue under the planning of, you know. If you allow this use, maybe other heavier uses aren't, won't come here because, uh, there's a bunch of brides coming in to try and bridal dresses and it's not appropriate, uh. Uh, for to have retail in this particular zone. So that's again, the discussion and the issue. We have one speaker. Uh, Michael Nemannic, uh, agent for the applicant. Welcome, sir.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Can you be all right?
Yes. Uh, so we have a negative planning report and, uh, I guess it's up to you to, uh. First of all, this is, is this an, this is not a, this is a proposed use. It's not an existing use. It's being legalized, I assume. And, uh, city planning feels this is not appropriate. So, uh, you have five minutes and there's no other speakers and no other issues, uh. On this, no other conditions.
Perfect, so do what I can.
Go ahead.
My name's Michael Nemnich. I'm a development manager on behalf of Dunbar Developments Inc. Who is the builder of this neighborhood plaza. I'm the authorized agent acting on behalf of Pearl Bridal House. Which we hope will be the future occupants of these units. So the purpose of this application is, as you noted, to permit a small scale retail use of bridal shop. In three units of this development, units thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six. It's a recently constructed neighborhood plaza, subject to a core employment areas designation and which is zoned employment industrial. So as you're aware, the E-zone permits accessory small scale retail uses, subject to the condition. And it must be associated with a permitted manufacturing use and not exceed twenty percent of the manufacturing uses GFA. So the neighborhood plaza in question has a total GFA of eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six meters squared. Units thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six only contain approximately four hundred and sixty-eight square meters of GFA. Comprising about four percent of the plaza's total GFA. So this small scale retail use will predominantly occur within one hundred and four meters squared or approximately twenty-two percent. Of the GFA of units thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six. Uh, it needs to be mentioned at this point that the future occupants of the neighborhood plaza include a range of office uses. Creative and cultural uses, food and beverage manufacturing and small scale retail uses. Uh, at my presentation, there is on page number two, there is a example of different units and you'll notice that none of them are heavy industrial. So the proposed use of Pearl Bridal House principally involves a manufacturing of wedding garments from imported raw materials and fabrics. Along with the accessory sale such goods. Here's how the business works in a more detailed, uh, way. So first, a customer of Pearl Bridal House will enter the shop's reception area to attend a pre-scheduled appointment. There are no walk-ins. The customer would then proceed to the consultation area to choose her dress, if not already decided upon. Once the dress is chosen, the dress would be removed from storage and fitted to the customer. And then an onsite seamstress would alter the product to customize the fit. Employees of Pearl Bridal House would also manufacture accessory products such as veils and comfort clothes on the, on the customer's request. Um, so Mr. Chair, uh, city staff have required the owner of Pearl Bridal House to apply for a variance to permit the retail use because they. Respectfully take the incorrect position that the proposed bridal shop is principally a retail use with an accessory manufacturing component. However, as stated and I submit, the proposed bridal shop is principally a manufacturing use that makes custom-made wedding dresses. Provides accessory, small scale in-shop retail services. Um, Mr. Chair, I submit the pros, proposed variance meets the general purpose and intent of the Toronto Official Plan. Because the establishment of new manufacturing uses is permitted along with compatible small scale retail uses, which I submit proposed bridal shop will be. Also proposed minor variance permits, maintains the general purpose and intent of the citywide zoning by law. Because the proposed bridal shop use involves the fabricating, processing and assembly of wedding dresses and accessories. Along with their sale to appointment-only customers. I want to emphasize at this point that this shop is not a Hudson Bay department store or a Nike's clothing store where customers can just walk in. Take an article of clothing off the rack and buy it. Your all clothing must be ordered in advance. Designed, manufactured, altered and sold to appointment-only customers. Okay. Variance is minor in nature, I submit, because the bridal shop would only be four percent of the total GFA of the neighborhood plaza. But also because any retail activity will predominantly occur within twenty-two percent of the GFA of units thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six. Um, with respect to the existing context, there are already several retail uses in this employment area, including a fireplace store. A floor store and several meat and cheese shops within a five-minute walk. And I'd also have to mention, and this is labeled on page two of my presentation. There's already an antique real retail store, never gets old shop and a beauty supply store slash artisan locating units fifty-two and forty-one of the neighborhood plaza. Um, as a final, uh, comments on the existing context. Uh, as far as we're aware, bridal shops have traditionally been permitted in other core employment areas and E-zone lots. One example we found seven kilometers away was the Silk Bridal Shop located at one sixty-three Sterling Road. So as far as we know, it's the same general type of business and the same designation and in the same zoning. Um, I'd like to also mention that, uh, the owner's listening to this presentation. And, um, you know, she really wants to start to get her business up and running. She's a small business owner. And so if the committee would have any concerns about permitting this retail use unconditionally. I would suggest the committee considers approving it on an interim basis for a period of five years. And that it can be revisited later in five years if there should be any more concerns. So for all these reasons and subject to any questions and comments you may have, these have been my submissions in support of this minor variance.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I have a particular, uh, expertise in this area. I meant, I spent thirty-two years. Managing large industrial commercial slash retail complexes and I agree with you. That these things are in flux. You don't have, that's why I was most interested. I will glad you touched on. And I wouldn't mind you going back and looking more detail on the other, uh, uses of the other fifth forty-seven units. Okay, so I manage properties like this, some bigger, some smaller and the. So the issue is not to tell me the fiction, it's an, it's an, it's not true that they're only selling in twenty percent and they're manufacturing. Come on, it's a bridal shop. But, so I don't think that is a, a way that you, you manufacture chocolates and you sell a small twenty percent area in the front where you do some little bit of retail. Where you're gonna win on this is to show that the tenant mix, and this is an existing place, is primarily prestige employment. It's, there is retail, retail type. You mentioned the antique shop, you mentioned, um. You, yeah, if you look at the page, can we go to your presentation and look at the other tenants? Specifically a final Edward Jones Financial. That's where your application is supportable, not on the fiction that you fit within the twenty percent. Retail of, and the other eighty percent is manufacturing. These dresses are not, you know, they're altered, they're not manufactured there. So you have a beauty, you know, um, so again, let's go back to this use of a film production studio. You have video production. Uh, like I said, you have a sudden group real estate office, so there's office uses here. That's how it's supportable. Um, you mentioned a fire, is there a fireplace? You mentioned within a five-minute walk, there's some other retail stores. Did you mention you were trying to rely upon other retail uses, not on this particularly fifty unit plaza?
Um, sir, I, I was referring to a, a fireplace store that's about a two-minute walk away, so that's not. Located in this plaza, but it's just a comment on the general character of this employment area.
No, thank you for that. I'm just, I'm just saying, it looks like your use is, uh, if you look, you know, what's there existing. I think that's where your application is supportable. That's just my opinion. Uh, because I don't buy the argument that you fit within the manufacturing, uh, the retail of twenty percent of the, the other eighty percent being manufacturing. So let's, um. So that's, that's what planning is worried that you're gonna, there is no heavy industrial, there's no one doing waste. Uh, I, I can't believe I had, like, I had their memo up. They laid a list of type of uses. This is not getting heavy uses. It's not gonna get heavy uses. So in my view, it is compatible. For that reason. That there's a, you know, a fine line between what's, what these plazas are being used for today. And there just aren't enough industrial uses to, to fill this place up. And if you didn't allow that, half this place would be empty. So sorry, that's just my opinion. Anyway, um, turn it over, see if the members have any questions or comments.
Both questions and comments. I'll, I'll, I'll start with the comments. So the one sixty-three Sterling was used as an example. Uh, for what it's worth, that's an E-zone. This is an E-one zone. I'm not sure what the. Use differentiation is there, but I believe there is a slight difference. Um, I share the chair's, um, comments with regards to twenty-four percent of it being retail and the rest of it being manufacturing. Uh, I believe you were trying to spin at one time that, you know, it's a smaller portion of the larger industrial plaza, so you can't have it both ways, but. You know, it's gonna be more than twenty-four percent. It's, is it compatible with what else is there? That's what it comes down to for sure. Um, somewhere in here I had a question. I, I've lost it. I'll, I'll come back, sorry.
Okay, um. Yeah, I think, you know, you're allowed certain like, you know, convenience like retails to support the industrials, so little restaurants. But this is, I think you fit within the exception of that the mix in today's reality of what's going on in these. Units, whether they're condominium units, which makes it even more likely because you have each individual owner just wanting to fill their place up rather than it's a. A landlord who's more concerned about the overall mix. That's, that's an issue. This is a condo, right? Not a, not a property owned by a landlord. It's gonna be individually owned units.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, so this is a condominium tenure and the, the bridal shop has already purchased the units. And so, uh, it will be subject to a condominium corporation and they'll manage the property to make sure everything's compatible. Especially given, uh, potential incompatibilities, none of which, uh, I submit exists today.
Yep, so again, you have an Edward Jones financial advisor, you have a real estate office. Those aren't exactly, you know, the type of things that were envisioned, so if those were permitted in here and I assume they're there as, that's the other thing, I assume they're, uh. With permissions, with all necessary permissions. Other than that, I'm, uh, you know, but i- it's the mix, I don't think is, uh. If you said there was a, uh, a waste, uh, transfer station next door and if there was some guy man, you know. Recycling tires two units away, that'll be a different story. But you have to look at the unit, the tenant mix here or the condominium owner. And whoever their tenants happen to be or if they're, you know, owner occupied is usually better. To kind of control what's going on. But my, yeah, my opinion that we'd fit under that, uh, the fact that it's, uh, is compatible with what's going on today.
The flip side of that, I guess, sorry, is I'm assuming there's no auto body repair shops, there's no mechanics shops, there's no welding shops in that plaza. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Chair, through you, um, so the permitted. I guess you could call it tenant or purchaser mix really focuses on amenity-based uses, so offices, there's. Approximately one quarter of this plaza are creative and cultural uses, so music production, uh, video production. Uh, uses like that, wh- why the purchasers and tenants are attracted to this site is because it's well-designed. It satisfies a particular niche for office space and. Light industrial uses within a area that's located fifteen minutes from a subway by walk, so, uh. That the type of uses isn't going to be something like a, like an asphalt manufacturing plant or, you know, any heavy recycling. Or really any heavy manufacturing at all. That's simply not contemplated and it doesn't exist on this site.
Yes, so that was my whole thing is why you have to look at what the other uses are. And I guess tactically you could say that they're permitted to be there as of right. But, uh, you know, if no one's doing, when you look at the current trend and mix. It's, um. I think it's, it's compared compatible with the other people that are there and some of the examples. That's why my first note was, what are the other uses? And then I saw your, your site plan there. Anyway, uh, any other, when the, anyone else have any other questions, uh, or?
Sir, um, I note in the planning report, they reference seventy-four Jutland and a, a minor variance that we had before us. I guess earlier this year. Does Dunbar own that site as well?
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, through you, so that minor variance was actually for a unit located in this plaza. Um, so that, that unit is there, um. It's not yet. I'm trying to look where it's on these plans. I, I don't see it, but it's been permitted here and they're just going through the fit out process, so.
Okay, it says it's to permit wellness, massage therapy and recreational uses. So I guess what my concern is, is that. These are recently approved and built, um, units. And I believe it got probably a site-specific zoning on it. And now you're incrementally. Changing the zoning through the minor variance uses. And I'm just concerned about the slippery slope here, um, and. Maybe as a business, you should be looking at. Potentially rezoning the site to the uses that are attracted here. I, I'm just a little concerned about incremental changes and, and the impacts on adjacent uses. Um, when you add potentially incompatible uses that may complain about. The uses that are properly permitted here. Just raising that as an issue.
It's, it's, I think it's a very good point, Mr. Palmer, you're making, uh. But when you look at somehow those existing uses, they say here in the, I just went back to the planning report, it says permitting the retail use in the site. May deter a future industry from locating on the site. And could attract similar types of uses to locate with an existing industrial building if, if approved. But what about the Edward Jones? Uh, what about the real estate office? There, you know, again, there's similar type. Real estate often Edward Jones could attract as many people as, as a bridal salon. This is, you know, it's just not a retail store. You have to make an appointment. And, uh, you don't just walk into, and they do permit, you know, service retail, like a convenience store or a small restaurant. To specifically serve the employment area. And this is extending it a bit, but it is, it's the reality, but I agree with maybe they should be going for a, uh. Rezoning. On the other hand, we did hear, maybe to make our decision easier, and I was surprised that he said it. That he did offer the fact to have a time-limited approval, uh, given the cost I would imagine it would take to. Outfit, uh, this bridal store, uh, you'd think they would. You know, um, but maybe they're prepared to take the chance to see how this evolves and maybe it's, listen to Mr. Palmer and, and change the zoning. In the interim, so there's that option of, uh, King Solomon justice and maybe just doing if. You don't want to do a refusal, he did offer it. We didn't, you know, community planning didn't, he offered it a temporary, uh, five-year approval. Which you have to potentially advertise their leasehold improvements and, and fixtures over five years. But that's their business. So again, that's another option. Uh, so members, I can't make a motion. I need one, uh, someone else has to. So if someone, uh. That's another option, I would think. And again, I don't have a visual on everyone. I see Beech, Meechy and Neil, but not.
All right, I'm, I'm, I think I'm ready for a motion here, uh. All right, I'm, I'm, I think I'm ready for a motion here. Uh, I'm concerned about. Change of use through minor variance. Um, we just had one of our decisions that we. Did a few months ago, maybe on Evans Avenue, that's been appealed by the city legal department. So that being said, the, the applicant did offer this option up, so I think. Given what we have here, I, I think it's. Can be considered minor in nature and meeting the intent of the zoning by law on official plan. Um, undesirable. So I think we limit the approval to five years. And, uh. See what happens in, in terms of parking. Compatibility with, uh, with other uses that may show up while this, uh, facility fills up.
Okay, so that is, uh, five years from today or following the appeal period, or. I guess we have Mr. Carvalho, do we need to specify or five years from?
We typically do five years from the date it becomes file and binding.
Okay.
Thank you for that motion, um. Have a second for that motion.
The fee, I'm prepared to second that.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. I can't see everyone. I assume it's unanimous. Are you opposed?
No, I'm in favor, sir.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, thank you, uh. I think at least, uh, maybe you gotta think of what Mr. Palmer had to say, because it's not gonna be the first one you bring. There's, there's another forty-seven units. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Nematic, um.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Gregory, Gregory is back, um, for item number twenty-five, one forty-five Woodward Ave. Do you want to go back to that one and see if we can, uh?
The actual, he's, it's no problems now, otherwise.
We haven't done a mic check yet, but he has called in a new, a brand new, different device, so we can give him a shock.
You do the mic check before we go back. Let's do item number twenty-seven, please.
Mr. Chair, I won't be able to do the mic check in behind the scenes, but I have to do it right now if you want me to do that.
Okay, you can write.
Okay, Greg, are you there? Microphone check for Gregory Fresca. Greg, are you there?
I'm here. You hear me?
Yeah, yeah, much better. Can you just get, uh, kind of get like, uh, two or three sentences out of you? Just say, hi, my name is and.
Hi, my name is Giorgio Frasco from Frasca Design. I'm here as the agent representing the owners.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, do you want to go forward with it then? Perfect.
Okay, clock and let's go. Yeah, might as well do.
I apologize for earlier.
The one with the additional, uh, uh, six dwelling units and additional floor of apartments for total seventeen. City says it's not. It's not conforming the eleven and we don't agree to the additional floor and seventeen total units. So, balls in your court, sir. We have a number of tenants at the building. Weighing, wanting to weigh in, and we had the next door neighbor, a tenant there who's no longer on the line. So, uh, please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you again, and I apologize for earlier. Um, my name is Giorgio Frasco, I'm Frasco's land and planning. We are the agents representing the owners of one forty-five Woodward Avenue. And our client is seeking relief from the variance identified in staff report from November third. Our opinion that proposed application is minor in nature, fits within the surrounding. And it's in line with the city's growth plan and also contributing to the city's missing middle housing supply and housing options. Um, the variants has requested our five. We originally had six and we did end up by removing the front door setback. Two of the, uh, there, there's the first two stem from the fact that the building is illegal, not compliant. Moderator, if you can kindly put, uh, appendix A on, on the, on the screen. Um, our building in that appendix is the green one, while the red dots of our three, four story buildings. Up to fifteen plus story buildings. The proposing. Is a, is appendix A up? That's right, thank you. The, um, the proposed massing in terms of fight complies with other developments in the neighborhood. Uh, moderator, if you can just scroll down to the other pages on the same appendix, pages two and three. Uh, the committee members will be able to see the type of buildings that are, are, uh, great, uh, around us. And those correspond to the right dots on the appendix. The staff report noted that the official plan, key objective, and I quote, is to ensure that the new development. Um, in established neighborhoods will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of each geographic neighborhood, including in particular. Prevailing heights, massing, scale, density, dwelling type, uh, nearby residential properties. And prevailing building types, end quote. The building in the appendix C as, in appendix A, sorry, that you have been seeing are all examples of buildings that make up a neighborhood from three, four story buildings up to fifteen plus. Story buildings. Our proposal is to add a third floor, or as considered by zoning the fourth floor. But whichever we call it, third or fourth, the neighborhood does support this additional floor as it respects and reinforces the existing physical character of the neighborhood. And particular heights, massing, scale, density and building type. The third variance we're seeking relief from is the force base index. The fact that the basement floor has been considered. Um, a floor has triggered the variance for FSI. Nonetheless, an increase of zero point one nine times the FSI represents a gentle intensification over the permitted one times lot area. The fourth variance is in regards to number of stories. Moderator, if you can please go to appendix B. Thank you, you have on the board. Um, in, in the past, committee has approved top floor additions. Um, as noted in appendix B, again, our building is always the green dot, the other, the, the other dots, the orange, orange dots are. Um, our previous committee decisions that had been approved for additional top stories. The correlation here with our proposal is that the addition of a floor, be it the second, third or fourth floor, was approved by committee and considered minor. Um, as seen in the photos, the, a fourth floor plus is very characteristic of this neighborhood. The fifth area is parking, uh, model, again, appendix B, uh, the purple dots. In, in this case represents minor variances for parking that were viewed and, uh, the reviewed minor, minor and obviously granted. The, it is to note that, um, uh, there is no letter of opposition from the city transportation department in the committee of adjustment file with respect to the issue of parking spaces. To approve minor variance, the committee of adjustment must satisfy, must be satisfied that the general intent, the purpose of the zoning by law, the official plan is, uh, and. An official plan is maintained, uh, the proposal is appropriate for the development and the variance request is minor. Uh, moderate, moderate, if you can please bring appendix A, A back again. Our project keeps with the general intent and purpose of the city's joining by law. The variance is requested with respect to the additional top floor design is also seen in other buildings in the neighborhood, so this will not be a unique case. Um, the events is requested, uh, as it relates to an additional top floor, not necessarily fourth floor. Are within the parameters previously approved by the committee as noted above. Uh, the proposal keeps with the general intent. Uh, the proposal for intensification shows that we went full circles and back to creating and proposing. Multiplex building in an area that has always supported that. The official plan discussed a different range of housing types in the neighborhood, and this proposal improves and modernizes the available housing supply to provide a diversity. Of housing options. Official plan's objective, a gentle densification is respected and achieved with no alteration to the neighborhood's character. In conclusion, we believe that the addition of a floor and the additional, uh, the addition proposed residential units creates an example. Of what is sought to be achieved by the official plan as a proposal reinforces the city's objective to promote intensification. And increase housing options, as stated on the staff report. The, this development is proposed in an area that is well supported by public transit. And considering the shortage of, of affordable housing is desirable to add additional residential units of the neighborhood. I respectfully recommend the approval of variances on the grounds that it meets the fourth test of the plan. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, gotta give you a for effort, sir. Can I ask you, uh, you've given us copies, you know, all these large apart buildings and townhouse complexes and whatever. Big slab buildings, Maple Leaf. Other than the little green dot with the overhead, do we have a picture of what your property looks like? I see on this green dog on the sort of overhead. Right? Is that the only? Picture the frontage of the house?
Mr. Chair, there's no elevation of the frontage of our hearts, of our house, but if you look at appendix C, there is, um, there's a blow, blow up on the.
So it looks more like, uh, you know, single family home neighborhood. You've given us copies of big slab, you know, huge buildings. Yeah, there's, there's part, there's big buildings in area, there's, uh. Other kind of townhouse complexes or whatever, but doesn't this look more like a single family? Aren't you kind of pushing the envelope already at eleven units in there? You want to add six more?
The.
Are you kidding? Are you kidding me? On a residential street? What, what, how many units in the house next door? Across the street, one? You know, the missing middle, they want additional.
On the, on the north, on the north side, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. On north, south, and across, it's just all the way. More or less, I see that shot in the appendix C where you're showing me, it looks like a single family type, uh, or duplexes or. By the overhead, they're not, it's, you know, next to a, uh, 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 you know, a slab building on a, on a park and like in, uh, one of the buildings you showed us on Maple Leaf. Right? This is like a residential neighborhood. Correct?
Uh, yes, it's all a residential neighborhood. The, if, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, 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 um, the, the, the single family dwellings on the north. They, they, they don't front on, uh, on Woodward. Their, their main, their backyards are pretty much to the, to the front of, uh, of our building. And the same thing happens to the, to the buildings on the south side of us. Their backyards are, are, um, uh, adjacent to our property. So we do have, um, so both, both north and south are besides the, the size of our lot. Are also differentiated by their, their complete, uh, length of their backyard, of the respective backyards of the single family dwellings.
Um, so, so you're sitting with eleven units where three are permitted under today's zoning because you're a non-conforming use and that's great. Uh, and you're looking to sort of enlarge and change by adding another six units. You're moving in the other direction. Are any of these properties have more than three units in them around what I see in, in appendix C?
The, the ones directly to the, to the left of, uh, to the west of us, they all have more than three units.
Okay, those are the ones I guess they're fronting on the main street?
Uh, they're fronting on, on Woodward, similar to us.
I see. Okay, anyway, uh, um, is anyone with eleven units or seventeen on the street? I don't think so.
The, the ones to the left of us, uh, that's the same, they have the same amount.
Hmm, okay. Anyway, uh, anyone else have any questions for, uh, the speaker before we go on here from the, uh, uh, people who've registered to speak? Looks like they're, uh. Uh, all tenants in the, in the existing building.
Just for what it's worth, um, I just did a zoom.
Yeah.
Google up and down the street. Uh, there are, it's all multiplexes on Woodworth, on the south side of Woodworth, so you're looking at four plexes, six plexes, eight plexes. They're all consistent. They're all three story. There are no four story buildings. Everything to the north is single family, low density. So. Yeah, you know, they already are the middle.
Okay, yeah. So, so thank you for doing that. Miss Laura Alderson is usually the person who goes. Picks up on, so I appreciate you doing that. That's always a good feature. So, okay, so that's your, you're acknowledging the point I'm trying to make, but.
I mean, that, that's the character of that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's not.
They, they are, they are the closest one to Jane Street for, for what it's worth.
This is, this we are. Okay, um, let's hear from the, uh, the neighbors then. And again, the question is served for you, George. Maybe if it's permitted, it should have to be by some other method other than coming to committee. Um, anyway, uh, first speaker I have here is Jocelyn Membes. Uh, welcome.
Hi there, I'm just wondering if I can turn on my camera or is.
Jocelyn, we're gonna bump you over to make you a panelist, as you did request to have your camera shown, so you are now able to turn your camera on manually yourself. That should be able to be done at the bottom of the screen. I, there you go. You're live. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to express my objection or refusal to this plan, just. Most of the points we've already touched upon, mainly that being that. This variance isn't entirely minor, especially since there are five variants overall that are requested, mostly with regard to the amount of units. Amount of stories as well. It's gonna go from a three story building to four story, and as we already discussed. Every single building on this neighborhood or on the street is entirely three stories. And everything else is just single family homes, so it's. We are the middle, as you already described. I know that in their proposal, they said, okay, we don't have this, uh, we have a missing middle. Let's, uh, fix that or let's address that, but our neighborhood already is that missing middle, so I don't think adding this. Floor or this story would actually perpetuate this missing middle that we already. Um, are addressing. And on top of that, I wanted to just address the fact that it's also not a minor variance with regards to its impact. I'm mostly thinking with regard to traffic generation and parking spaces, because if we're adding an additional six units, um. And we're not being able or permitted to have the parking spaces that are needed, which is nineteen and we're only getting ten. We can only imagine if there's visitors or there's people that actually have vehicles. Where are the vehicles gonna end up? They're gonna end up on the street parking and we already have so many vehicles on street parking just because. There is a hospital down the street and most employees do park along the street and there's no space to park if we have visitors. They can't go anywhere, so this creates bottlenecks of people trying to be like, there's a car here, it's blocking me, or like I can't get into the driveway and then. Yes, there is, um. They do patrol the area with, and, and sure that there are tickets, if so, but. If it's a weekend and you have visitors, a long weekend, Thanksgiving, you can imagine the amount of bottleneck that this can create. And on top of that, I wanted to address the fact that this change I don't think is an appropriate or desirable, desirable development, just because. It's, with regard to the official plan, it states that no changes should be made through rezoning, minor variance. That are out of keeping with the overall physical character of the entire neighborhood, and as we just addressed, the entire neighborhood is this three story building thing, and. This is entirely out of character and it, it's not materially consistent with the prevailing characteristics of properties within this neighborhood. So overall, I think that that's not desirable or appropriate. It's gonna look very different. It's gonna be, uh, like a sore thumb within the neighborhood and I don't think. It makes sense. And on top of that, I know that there were examples given of other, uh, residential areas that had this approval of their minor variance to add on a floor. But our zoning area is a residential multiple dwelling zone, so an RM. And all the examples that were listed were actually from RDs, so residential detached, so I don't really think that that's relevant in bringing up examples when they're. Different types of zoning areas. And on top of that, I, because of the fact that the examples are all from different, uh, zoning areas, I think that. This doesn't meet the general intent of the zoning bylaw, which is the residential multiple dwelling zone, which is supposed to. Provide multiple family dwellings on a lot and again, address that missing middle. And by creating this four story building, we wouldn't, we would no longer be, um. Like working toward that or perpetuating toward that. And then finally, with regard to the official, official plan, the proposal does not meet. The general intent of the official plan, which is that, uh, the neighborhoods, especially apartmental neighborhoods, aren't really changing. They're not. They don't have this constant flux of growth. That's, that's not a source where we see a lot of people coming in. Um, and in chapter two, policy number five, it's actually. The functioning of the lo- local network of streets in neighborhoods and apartment neighborhoods should be improved by minimizing traffic on local streets. And discouraging parking on local streets. So again, to touch to my points at the beginning of, uh, my presentation is that if we do have these. Increased and additional amount of units and less parking space, we're not creating, um. The ability for people to minimize traffic on these local streets. And we are not discouraging parking in local streets at that point. And on top of that, um, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that. Um, in chapter three of the official plan, it says that the design of new building facades should be materially and. Rhythmic to the facade of the entire neighborhood, so in order to ensure that it fits with adjacent building facades. So not even just the entire neighborhood, but the buildings that are beside it, across it, et cetera. And as I mentioned, all the previous, um, addresses, ninety-one Montana, one is who Fallstaff, ninety Chiswick, seventy-two Rainfield. All of these are RD residential zonings, and because of that, I feel that this request or this. Uh, this plan to. Have this minor variance isn't minor at all, and it doesn't meet. Not one, two, three, or four, one of these tests of what a minor variance should be. And I think that, again, it's apartment neighborhoods aren't a significant area of growth on a citywide basis, so. It's not like, uh, this, this would be driving or like driving, uh, oh my God, everyone come live here either, because. We have a consistent addressing of this middle.
Mr. Moderator, I don't see the clock. I don't know if, uh, Ms. Mendez is, uh, coming near her a lot.
Yeah, we're just over now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mendez, for that, uh, presentation. And for letting us know your thoughts, and you obviously have done a lot of research and homework into this, so much appreciated. And you're on screen too. Uh, our next speaker is Wendy Broom, uh, also one forty-five Woodward. Is, oh, sorry, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Mendez, uh, based on what she had to say? Uh, we can ask her now, or you can ask, uh, after we've heard from all of the neighbors. Okay, so Wendy, is Wendy Broom, uh, there? Next speaker.
You all hear me?
Yes, and I believe we have.
Thank you, Jocelyn, for that. That was well done, it was well explained. Um, you are absolutely correct, the buildings that were shown as, uh, comparison to our area are not even in the area. They are across the street, down the street. Our complete street from the top to the bottom is the same size building. Also, I've noticed going through the document that this. Percy, this procedure started back in February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. We weren't, um, advised of the property being sold until March first for most. Myself, I was not acknowledged of the new building owner until all around March fourth. It seems to me that the landlord or the building property manager, what he wants to call himself. Has undermined it and is trying to. Get rid of us in a way that he can, you know, do what he wants to do. I mean. The, the, the will, as I said, the, the backs, uh, the, across the street is the backs, all the buildings are the same. We're all one, we're just individual family buildings. It would, uh, for us to have construction on top of us, we literally could not live here. So I do oppose strongly to any addition to this building.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mendez. Thank you for your, uh, for, uh, echoing that and, uh, and what Ms. Mendez had to say. Any questions from his group? Members, no, if not, let's, the last, last speaker also from one forty-five is Olga Folino. Is Ms. Folino online?
Hello?
Hello, is that Olga Folino?
Hi.
Hi, let us know what.
Oh, yes, more or less, I'm just a hundred percent opposed of this, um, what my co-tenants have stated, I'm just gonna say the same. Comments, so. I've been here for twelve years and again, it's, I think it's just more or less, um. Trying to get us out and undermining us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, if none of the members have any questions for the three tenants who spoke, let's go back to Giorgio Frasca for his rebuttal.
Hello.
Hello.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um. I've, uh, I got a chance to listen to the opinions of the neighbors and, um. The, the, in the reply and response to, uh, neighbor number, number one. In regards to parking areas, uh, not sufficient parking on the streets or, or visitors, um, as, um. The, I know that the, there, uh, there, there's, uh, as we stated, there's ten parking spots on the, on the lot and, uh, of those ten parking spots, not all of them are full at the moment. I believe, uh, from my understanding is only there's a six tenants that are able to, not they're able, the six tenants that only have cars that end up parking over there, so. So, uh, there is some room for additional, for additional parking for, for visitors if they ever come. Additionally, the, the, um, the road is also used for additional parking. The, the, uh, a lot of, um, uh, the tenants that, um, um, that currently live there or. New tenants that might be living there, the transportation along Jane Street is being a main interior road is, uh, is easily accessible, uh, for TTC. As a matter of fact, as stated on one of our appendix, uh, the, it's only around the eighty meters in walking distance to, to the main street. Um. Furthermore, and one another, another comment from the speaker number one is in regards to the, uh, official plan. And what allows and doesn't allow, but the official plan also does recognize the neighbors, uh, uh, neighborhood, sorry, are not static and will evolve. And, uh, over time, changes will occur through renovations, additions, and infill housing activities. Um, so, so, uh, the, and, and, and what we're proposing is one of those additions, renovations. Um, the, I forgive me if I missed any of other comments, but, uh, going on to speaker number two. Uh, one of her comments is not, has nothing to do with the fact of any of our bylaws or any of our, uh, requested variances. The fact that, uh, uh, she, she, her comment was that she cannot live there, I'm not sure what that. Um, I don't know the details of what she's referring to and, and I can't, I can't see more than that. And neighbor number three, um, uh, rebutted the same thing as neighbor number two. Um, so. In regards to, um, the variances, again, we, because of the, because of the reasons depicted on our, on our presentation, we do believe it's minor and. And we hope that, um, you guys, um, the, the, the committee will be able to approve it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, any follow-up questions, um, for, uh, Mr. Frasca? And if there is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Um, I do have one question, um. So the properties, I guess, to the west, the similar built form, are those also owned by the applicant? Or is that, are those separate, separately owned?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, they are not owned by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions or someone ready for a motion?
I have no questions, I'm ready for a motion. Um, I think what's being proposed here, um, is an apartment. Um, to go from the middle to an apartment, an apartment. By nature requires certain amenities which are not gonna be provided in this proposal. Um, I believe this is bad planning, I believe, um, it's not minor. And I would categorically, uh, move for refusal.
Thank you, Mr. Camer, if you have a second here for that motion. I can't, you know, have visual on Mishi.
Over. I gotta second it.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, all in favor? Can't see, Sophia?
Unanimous, yes.
Okay, it's unanimously refused. Thank you, Mr. Frasca, thank you to, uh, the tenants, uh, who spoke, especially Ms. Mendez. Uh, for a very comprehensive, uh, presentation. Um, okay, we done twenty-six, so, uh, before we go to twenty-seven, I just noticed, uh, it's already four, we're at this two hours now. Uh, I figured sometimes we like to push through in the afternoon and just finish, but we do have another six left, so. Uh, you know, perhaps a bathroom break is, uh, is suitable, it's returning fifteen minutes. At a quarter to five, I know it extends things, but. Um. I think it's only appropriate to take a break at this point. Does everyone agree or would you like to proceed on just forge on?
I don't. Either way.
Sorry?
I'll go either way.
I'm getting old, so I need to have a break.
Mr. Chair, a five-minute break would be ideal, I think.
Okay, how about ten?
Perfect, return at four forty.
Four forty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Eventually. Hello, uh, moderator staff, I, I seem to be on auto-only mode? Yeah.
Members, I just want to bring to your attention that, uh. It appears Michael is having some, I, or technical problems right this second, he's dropped off the meeting, so we'll wait till he comes back on and we'll go from there. Oh, looks like he might be coming back on now.
I, I had to log back off because, uh, somehow I was on audio only. So I don't know if I'm back.
Michael, we can hear you, can't see you yet, but your tile is.
I, I logged back off because it said audio only. So let me just push on it and see how I can do that. Oh, here, hold on.
Yeah, again, we can hear you well, but, uh, we, we can hear you, we, we can hear you, but you're still, um, oh, now we see you, yep, perfect.
Okay, so we have six items left, first one, I guess, and the rest of the afternoon, it appears we have, uh, items that were previously deferred. So, uh, the first one, uh, is item, we're at item number twenty-seven. This matter was deferred from September the twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-twenty-two, Urban Forestry is looking for condition number one. Uh, this is to construct the new attached garage with three variances, we have the materials from the previous hearing, including the minutes. Uh, we have a revised public notice, which is not highlighted, so if there's any change from the previous. Revised plans, we have a planning condition of approval being recommended, event of approval, they wanted constructed, is illustrated on the site plan. To respect a couple of matters, and we have Urban Forestry memo and Metrolinks, uh, advisory. Uh, the speaker on this application is Matthew Rebo, that's, we only have one speaker, each and for the applicant.
Hi there, Councilman, my name is Matthew Rebo, Perspective Views at one twenty-six, Captain Street North in Hamilton. And, um, I am quite under the weather, so if I mute myself, it's just to shield you from undesirable noise.
Okay, so we have three variances here, uh, it's a new attached garage, no one, um. You're, you're okay with the planning condition I take in with Urban Forestry condition?
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind, I, I don't, we have support, uh, I did make just a couple of points that I would like to drive home.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So. Um. Uh, stated in the vendor's report, unique high shape lot and bylaw definition for maximum building debt, so it's just. Because of the byline, how it's calculated, twenty-five percent of the center line of the property, it skews this calculation from. If we were to just measure from the front to the back and very reasonable, I believe, what we're asking. The owner orders find it difficult to make better use of the side yard space due to the angled lot. And thought that this would be much better solution and aesthetically pleasing rather than constructing the garage sidewall parallel with the lot line but complying with one two point two meter setback. Lastly, we'd like to point out total area that we are proposing. Less than one point two meter setback is only one point seven six square meters. Very minor nature and reasonable. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this matter was deferred in order to correctly identify required variance for new public or hearing notice. And that was the reason for the referral. Rather straightforward. Applying to say he's okay with the planning condition to tie the construct is illustrated with respect to a couple of matters. And the urban forestry condition. Any questions for Mr. Rabo or is someone ready for a motion?
Just a quick question. Variance two is an existing situation, I'm assuming, and it has to do with the pie-shaped lot as you explained.
Correct. Well, not entirely. I mean, how it's calculated. We are proposing the garage addition to go further back, but we're jogging. So if you pull up the site plan, it's illustrated quite clearly.
Yep.
Might be easier to pull up the site plan.
It's on the way. We're just having some lag issues here at the office currently due to bandwidth concerns.
I've seen it. I got it. It's good.
Great, thank you.
If no one has any questions, I'm willing to move a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I find the application to be minor and would like to move approval subject to forestry condition one. And planning condition, which is basically to tie it to the site plan drawings in July sixth, twenty twenty two. With respect to south side yard setbacks and building length.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGriff, a second for Mr. Comerick's motion. Ms. McCluskey, thank you. All in favor? Okay, Kenzie Sophia Neil, I assume they're in favor and it's unanimous.
Thank you, council.
Everyone's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rabo. You have your approval. Okay, next item is item number twenty eight fifty one West Royal Road. It's an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling and a new rear deck. We have, this matter was deferred from the August eighteen twenty twenty two hearing. We have urban forest requesting condition two. We have material from the previous hearing and harvest report, a cover letter and planning recommending refusal on their memo dated November the first. And then the additional materials, we have the supporting material, which we can get that up on the screen as we hear from the agent. Ashweek Chabra, agent for the applicant, and then we have the homeowner on the line as well. But there's no one here to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and committee members. Myself, Ashweek Chabra from Studio Four and I'm representing the owner for fifty one West Royal Road. So the previous meeting got deferred because of issue raised by urban forestry. And we wanted to work with the planning department to rectify some variances. So with urban forestry, we have worked with our new proposal, which you have seen with the arborist report. So we have make sure we are protecting all the trees and we are providing tree protection barriers around all of them. Only two trees which we are planning, one is gonna get injured a little bit because there is a existing pavement around it. So that's gonna be done under the supervision of arborist. And then we have one tree on the backside because of that, like the urban forestry raised the issue before. So that tree we are removing and gonna plant a new tree adjacent to it. So. So with the variances, so variance number one, we have maximum height of the main balls, which is allowed seven meters. And we are proposing seven point six three meter. So actually, it's gonna be seven point four seven meter. It's just like the project. If you see the front elevation, it's just the projection above the windows. So that's why it's going seven point six seven meter. And we have some references from previous committed decisions, which are like eighteen Boes Spirit Avenue where they got allowed for eight point two three meter. Then we have sixteen Rusko Crescent, which is allowed for seven point two four meter, then thirty one Lockhead Boulevard, which is allowed for eight point three meter. Also, we are not exceeding the overall height of the building, which is less than nine point five meters. So it's just the main ball to accommodate the design. So going to variance number two, allowed FSI is zero point four five times. And we propose zero point six time. So as this is an existing house. So we didn't even encroach like a single inch on any of the side and we are maintaining our existing setbacks. So similarly with this, we have like previous application for thirty six Fremont Avenue where it got approved for point six two times. Then we have twenty five York Lane Avenue where it got approved for zero point six six times and fifty one Roxaleen Street, zero point six three times and thirty Hill Garden Road, which got approved for zero point six three times. So all this info we have compiled in our presentation and it's on the tabby, which is showing all the variances which we are applying for has been previously been accepted by the committee. So going on to variance number three. So platform height should be one point two meter, which is for the rear deck. And we are proposing one point five two meter as we are using the existing basement of the house. So we are just raising the height of the basement. So that's why we are getting this variance. And previously, we worked with the planning department and tried to remove it. But the thing is, if we provide the steps for the deck, it's gonna create tripping hazard for the client and as the kids, because his children are really small right now, so he doesn't want to do that. So going on on variance four. So maximum encroachment allowed us two point five meter into the rear setback and we are doing two point nine nine meter, which I feel is minor and the nature of the variance is minor too, because we are only exceeding like point four five meter. And we have like a similar case, sixty four Roxaleen Avenue, which is like, has been approved previously with four point three four meter. And so now going on variance five. So allowed soft hit height is six point five meters and we are proposing the software height to seven point four seven meter. That's because our main wall height is seven point four seven meter. So this variance is very relatable to the variance number one. And I feel software will increase automatically if we are increasing the wall height. And even in bylaws like, like it was like. So the maximum wall height, we can go seven meter, but for the software, we have to be six point five meter. So even the bylaws are contradicting in this variance. So we have worked closely with the planning department and remove, we like, we have two more variances before. So we have removed the variances which they have previously issued with, which was about the flat roof and Juliet balcony. So pretty much that's it for us, like for the explanation part for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chabra. Mr. Chabra, you know, when I first saw this application, I said, community planning, this is a straight top up. It's not an extension. It's just putting a second floor over a first floor. How can they be opposed to that? And now I read their letter more carefully and I can see that complaint seems to be, and I assume you acknowledge this, is by raising, you're looking to push everything up out of the ground. There's three stairs now to the first floor. You're looking to make it six. So because the basement's out of the floor and the further they're saying, even though you're running a second story, they're saying it looks like a third story. He says, city staff note that although the application technically proposes one additional story, the altered dwelling has the appearance of a three-story dwelling when viewed from the street due to the placement of the garage between the ground floor level and the basement. Moreover, the main entrance to the dwelling is proposed to be accessed via six front steps, whereas currently there are only three. And they said the proposed variance that Frank Wayne main wall height will impact how the dwelling appears from the street. Therefore, they're saying it doesn't respect and reinforce the physical character and I recommend refusal. The point six, I think you've given us examples where there's been higher. So that is a separate issue. But the issue about the fact that it looks like a three-story, why are you raising it up? Whatever? And perhaps you can let us know what you're, Mr. Bellissimo, or one of our members likes to ask this question in your, in your response to my question, how, what are your internal ceiling heights in the basement, first and second floors?
So as the owner is planning to live long time here and he is previously living in the same neighborhood for years. So this is like pretty standard practice to have more space above the garage to accommodate the living space, which is going pretty standard in the, even in the neighborhood. We have like sixty Rock scene venue, I guess, that has been previously approved and we have the pictures of that below the tabby too. And the owner want to spend like rest of his life there. He is like with kids and like just beginning his married life exactly. And so he want one time to go in the house and be there, you know, like spend rest of his life there. So that's what he's aiming for. So even for the architectural style, he wants break. We are like, we are going according to the neighborhood, like we are not changing in materials or anything. So.
So what? So the base, why are you raising this? So the first floor is being raised? So is this the, it's looking a second story addition. Are they doing a complete internal renovation? Because how do you, how do you bring the stairs up to the first floor, higher three steps to six? Don't you have to change the landing or is there some internal stairs or something going down? If it was three and it means you're, you're changing the whole front, the whole, where the basement ends and you're bringing it further out.
We are trying to go as the budget of the owner is reasonable to. So we are not building a complete new house. We are planning to use existing foundations of the house. So even we go, if we go more down, that will increase the cost dramatically with with the underpinning process in everything and the maximum height, if we look at the current neighborhood is allowed nine point five meters. So we feel we are building with the height restrictions, which are already there. So we are not going above any major height restriction and and pretty much like we, like the owner didn't willing to spend too much money to build a new house. So it's like a dream project for him. We have been waiting for almost one and a half year now to pass through the committee. So because of due to the COVID and all.
I don't think it takes. When do you file your application? About a year and a half ago. Well, you, you were deferred in August. That's August. You didn't, I don't know why you put in your application, but in any case, I believe that's planning concern. Let's see with the committee members. There are no neighbors in opposition.
Yeah, like we have even supporting letters from the neighbors and they want to really see like my applicant moving there and he's really good with everyone. So nobody opposed the application to.
Okay, thank you. Some members, any questions for Mr. Chabra or is someone ready for a motion?
I have questions. I have comments and questions. First off, sir, I believe most of the examples that you've given in support of your application are not in the neighborhood that your house is located in. The majority of your, of your examples are between Royal York and Scarlet Road.
In the neighborhood.
And the neighborhood that you're in is between Islington and Royal York. My particular concern is the point six coverage. And if you could please point to, like, show me one property that has point six coverage or greater that lies between Islington and Royal York, please do so.
This data which we have created, we got from City of Toronto and it's like very simple process to get this data. And they give you, provide you data around the property only. So if you look at eighty Breaker Crest Avenue, which is three hundred meters away from the subject land, COA approved zero point five nine times of the lot area. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I muted myself. Well, was it number eighty you're saying?
Yeah, eighty Breaker Avenue. It's only three hundred meters away. It's not too far or anything and it's like COA approved zero point five nine times. Then I can give you more example, fifty one Roxaleen Street, which is seven fifty meters away. The proposed dwelling.
Okay, hold on, but. Breaker, is that the one that's the corner of Royal York?
Yeah.
Yeah. So really it fronts on to a major arterial, so it's not the same situation.
But then we have other cases too, which are inside the neighborhood and.
Are they east or west of Royal York?
We have some cases which are east of, east of Royal York.
They're all east. Give me example that is west. That's not on Royal York.
So I have to, if you can give me time, I can give you examples. We have like.
But they're not on your list.
Yeah. No, 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 we have, sir. Like we have definitely, we have, we took so many examples, like we've worked on based on the neighborhood. So.
So, sir.
But I think you, you worked on based on the neighborhood, you know, on the other side of Royal York, which to me is not the same neighborhood.
Right. Planning agrees with you, Mr. Comerick. They're saying that there's none, there's nothing at point six or close to it. Okay, so is any more further questions or is someone ready for a motion? So we're waiting. Does anyone have any other questions or waiting for a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion here. I don't think the applicant has proved to us that this request for minor variance or minor or in keeping with the zoning by law and official plan or desirable. And I agree with the planning take on this, that it's out of character. And the FSI is way overwax. So I'm gonna move for refusal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Palmer, a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? I don't see Sophia's. Is Sophia's hand up?
Yes.
It's unanimously refused. Thank you, Mr. Chabra. Unfortunately, your application has been refused. Okay, our next application is item number twenty nine. Again, this is again an application we're into and the application was previously deferred. This matter was deferred from the July twenty eighth hearing, one thirty seven Lexington Avenue. It's an application for a one-story front and rear additions, new front porch and new rear deck. There are two variances, urban forestry, again, looking for refusal. We have the material from the previous hearing, including the minutes, cover letter, applicant submissions, planning, planning justification brief. Planning is given us a community planning, a condition of approval in the event of approved, except approve approval of the application. They would like to construct it is illustrated on the site plan as regards to the front yard setback, urban forestry again, has a memo and looking for refusal of the application for these one-story front and rear additions. And the speaker for this application is Jeff Jansen. The agent for the applicant.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Good evening or good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. Our application, obviously, was deferred prior to, and we've gone back and did some revisions. And obviously you can see that the city of Toronto now planning staff. And obviously you can see that the City of Toronto now planning staff is in support of. Uh, we went as far as done a planning report and submitted that as well, showing the justifications. Uh, based on the recommendation for forestry, we have applied for forestry permit. Uh, we have conducted an harvest report. The tree that's in question is where the one-story garage addition is going on that one side yard. If you noted on the site plan, that side yard is four point two six meters. Now that side yard is not requesting a minor variance. So uh, just so we're all aware that if we weren't in front of the council or the committee members for the minor variances, that tree would be more of a process through the building application process. And it wouldn't really come up through a minor various process. Due to the fact that we are in front of the committee members for two other or the other minor variances, it has obviously flagged that the forestry department regarding this one tree. That like I mentioned before, that tree has no impact. It's not a concern for any of the variances that are uh put forth in front of the members. Um, so basically, um, we have a recommendation through the harvest report that was submitted to forestry. It sounds like to me that uh based on the harvest report, they're looking for one replacement tree, which is noted in their report and cash and lieu of for two additional trees. Obviously, if you look at the layout, um, based on our variances, that um it is an unusual property. It's a corner lot. The house is set in quite a bit from the flange corner. Um, hence why we use that space to bring the addition out towards that area where the variances are required. Uh, based on the layout, if you see it in the site plan, uh, this particular proposed addition will then give the uh homeowners a bit of a rear yard. Um, we are renovating the main floor. So this proposed rear yard where uh that's where the existing garage slash carport was and will be removed. Uh, it gives them a better flow for the home, having children, they can uh cook in their kitchen and still see the yard with children. Um, and we did again, like I said, we did make changes uh once we were deferred and went back to planning and obviously uh, we hope that the committee members can review everything and obviously the forestry, I think, is a small hurdle that we can get through with our harvest report as well.
Okay. Pretty well for my end. But you're okay with the planning recommended condition of approval tying it to the plans? The issue is the denial uh urban forestry on their memo uh is said to deny their either front yard setback is going to uh require the removal of that healthy protected by law tree. Number one, is that is that tree able to be protected? You're gonna have to negotiate like you just stated and make cash and loo and plant additional trees because of the placement of that tree as of occasion by the front yard setback variance that you're at, that you that you need. Is there? There is a front yard setback variance. Correct. Yeah. Correct. So they're saying because of that, that's the only reason that urban forestry, if they, if the tree is affected by a construction as of rights, they can't complain. But in this case, I guess they're saying you agree that it's it's due to the front lot line extension uh addition being put and the variance to the bylaw on the front yard. So are you gonna be able to save that tree or is you're gonna?
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, myself. Yeah, the tree unfortunately um was placed or where it is on the site plan. Let me just grab the drawing here. Um, we probably can't save it because the time you cut the tree roots and that based on the harvest report, the tree is leaning towards the road. So I think when you look at the tree placement and where the roots you're gonna be cut, I think obviously you could try to save it by cutting the roots, but because the tree is leaning towards the road at this present time. And when you do cut the roots, it's going to jeopardize the tree even further from stability. And I think from a liability point of view, I I think it wouldn't be a good process to keep that tree. It could then fall towards the road uh which could cause a bit of a liability issue. So I I do think the tree is from a liability safety concern. Um, may need to be removed. Um, and and again, uh, we're very open to obviously based on the average report, planting a new tree and cash and loo up. Uh, like I mentioned to to the members prior uh to this, that that variance on that, that's right, that side yard uh does not require variance. So regardless if we are in front of the committee members today or not for the other variances, which are off uh Mar, 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 Marla Mon Road. Um, we wouldn't be in front of the committee members discussing this tree. It'd be a normal application process, I think, through the billing department. So I just want to make sure we're all clear of that as well.
It's farther than eight point nine meters. So it would be outside of the setback, front yard setback regardless of what's still the existing setback.
Who's that talking?
No, Sean, he was the one that prepared all the drawings in my office. I apologize for that.
One speak. Oh, he can tell you whisper in your ear, but yeah. So anyway, you're okay. You're you're dealing with urban forestry on this matter. I take it you wanted, you didn't do your addition only at the rear because you want to deprive a a rear yard backyard area. So that's.
That's correct. That's correct.
You have a small addition at the front and at the rear. Okay, members, any other questions for the, does anyone have any questions for uh the agent or someone ready for a motion? Mr. Mark.
Yeah, I I'm good to go with with a motion. I believe forestry is proposing uh condition two as an alternative to the denial. So I'm I'm assuming the applicant's okay with condition two.
Yes.
Okay, um, so, yeah, I mean, the the front yard encroachment is is very minor. Um, and I don't I don't have a problem approving this. I believe it's uh it meets the four tests. So I'd like to move approval, a subject to forestry condition two and also subject to the planning condition um which calls for it to be tied to the site plan of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two as it as related to the front yard itself.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Seconded for that. Mishi McCloskey, thank you. All in favor? Uh, I assume the other two hands are up. You have unanimous approval. Hey, uh. Sorry?
I was just saying, yes, it's unanimous.
Okay, great. Okay, so you have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that was Mr. Jensen. We'll now move over to item number thirty. Uh, Matthew Fung is the agent twenty thirty-eight Madoff Road. And this is an application, I'll just do a bit of an introduction. Yeah, an application for a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Uh, we have either eight variances. We have a planning condition of approval. They want it to tie to the site plan as relates to building length and front yard setback. Transportation has no concerns. We have a forestry memo. Forestry is looking for condition one or five refusal. And this was deferred from September first in order to consult with planning. Uh, so planning has uh and oh, yeah, the additional materials, we have applicant submission. Perhaps we can get that on the board. It has some very nice renderings as well as the support petition and the additional materials. So let's speak here for Mr. For Matthew Fong, he's the only speaker on this uh application. He's the agent for the applicant. Welcome, Mr.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and uh committee members. So I'm glad that the renderings and the petition got to you guys in time. Um, the homeowners did uh canvass the neighborhood and may I highlight uh one oh four Laurel, forty-three Madoff, thirty-seven Madoff, eighteen Madoff, sixty-four Cronin are immediate neighbors to um third day Madoff. So they all look at this corner and all of them um were presented this proposal and all of them are in agreement uh with the design um that it doesn't impact um the neighborhood um like a like a mansion would. Um, so they they are a growing family of three right now, two sets of grandparents, and they want to expand this existing bungalow into a more usable space. So the reason why we deferred because we wanted to um work alongside a planning department to reduce the size of the house so that, you know, they are also uh in agreement. Um, now, do you want me to kind of walk through each variance or?
I think that's quite necessary, but I would, what I would like you to touch on, and I guess planning is okay, and I guess they're, they seem to be okay, subject to tying it to the plans. To keep you honest for the length of the front yard setback, I assume you have no problem with that. But the issue is, is again, urban forestry, they basically uh see, looking to see which of your variances they were opposed to. It looks like they're opposed to all of them with respect to two private trees. So perhaps you can talk about these two private trees and whether they will be uh able to be saved, will they not be saved?
So if you, if you, if you have the renderings in front of you, if you don't mind scrolling down, maybe I can kind of explain it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, this rendering is you in your additional materials. Let's see.
Yes, yes. So so this is just the proposal house that's going to replace the bungalow. So this is the existing bungalow. What we're gonna do is we're going to replace the the entrance of the garage from Madoff to Cronin. So if you scroll down one more picture, if you don't mind. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna cover the driveway. All those trees are govern or city-owned trees. We're not gonna touch any of those trees. What they're referring to is a tree in the rear yard and there's also a tree in the um now the proposed front, if you can, if you can continue scrolling down one more. So that little tree beside the fire hydrant, um, I believe it's less than um um uh one point two meters of tree protection. So if you go one more.
Any tree. We're talking about two private trees.
Yeah, so the private tree. So if you go back up, sorry, one more picture. If you go back to the 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 picture above this one, um, there's a tree, there's some trees right there, some shrubs. And then there's two trees in the back here you can see from the um uh in in the photo. We may have uh we during construction, we possibly could injure that tree. So it's a matter of perhaps we can um uh have payment in lieu uh to replace this tree, uh pay for three trees um to the city.
In any of it, you're you're saving the city trees and no city trees are being affected.
That's right.
Pull up the uh planning, just to show the two trees, make sure we're talking the same as moderator of the uh forestry memo uh in our original package, not in the additional materials. I think it's dated November first. Uh, and they give the alternative an application. So they mentioned the privately owned birch. I assume are those and they show us sort of a picture of it from the next to you. I just wanted to figure out. You can let us know where there was and a privately owned birch, thirty-one meters and a and a one thirty-eight meters. These are the two trees that they're seeking to recommend refusal of your application for.
Yeah, so this those trees are in the rear of the yard, in the in the rear yard. So that's the tree that you can see right there.
Okay.
So we may interfere with that. That may be um, that may be affected by the construction.
Yes, it says it's will require the removal. They say will, not may of a broad lot. And the permanent loss of viable planting space. Again, you're not over on coverage, are you here?
Uh, we are over on coverage by uh one point four percent.
Okay, less than ten meters. Uh, okay, let's see if any of the other members have questions for you, but thank you. Those when renderings are very good. You can illustrate exactly what you're doing here. And the sky even looks so dramatic. It's looks great. Nice. Uh, members, any questions? Uh?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for the applicants or if it's for staff. I'm trying to understand why variance eight exists. There's the driveway not coming from a flanking street?
This is coming from the Cronin Street.
Which is the flanking street because you're you're on Madoff, right? So then why would you need to have a variance for the driveway?
Uh, not sure.
They're, they seem to imply that he's gonna have parking space from the front some street, but in fact, you're saying it is from the flanking street.
Well, I guess the question here is which is the flanking street? I'm assuming Cronin is the flanking street.
Typically, uh, Stan, the the flanking street is the long side, the long side of the lot. So the short side would be the front lot line and the long side would be the side lot line.
So it doesn't go by what the where the street address is, it goes by the length of the lot?
Yes. The flankage always means the longer side, like the side yard.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Just I just wanted that for my own clarification.
There, if nothing else, we learned something today. Okay? Okay, so any other questions for Mr. Fong or some ready to make way with a motion?
I've lost visual with half of the panel. I don't know if everyone else can see everyone else or not, but.
I can see everyone.
I can see I can see everyone as well.
Okay. And then now he's okay. Anyway, can someone ready for a motion?
I I I'm good for a motion if no one else has any questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I'd like to move approval. I believe it meets the four tests. I'd like to make that approval subject to planning condition uh which ties it to the site plan of September twentieth twenty-two as related to the building layout, uh building length and front yard setback. Um, and also subject to forestry condition one.
You know, the second for that motion, please. Someone, I, some Mishi's hand went up, but I thought I heard Sophia's voice and cut out or something. Anyway, okay, Mishi seconds, uh, all in favor? Yeah, I don't see Sophia, but.
Now you hear my voice. Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. We have, if you have approval uh pursuant to Mr. Kameric's motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fun. So thirty-one A B has been deferred, so we can move over to item number thirty-two, which I'm just looking at my sheet of notes that I made and there's a lot of them. So uh, let's just move over here. Item number thirty-two. Thirty-one A B. Okay, this matter again was deferred um from the September fifteen, twenty twenty-two. There was no description of the proposal. That was the purpose of the deferral, unfortunately. It's an application for one-story front addition and to extend the existing attached garage, a previous COA application approved variance linked to lot coverage, floor space index, rear yard setback and soffit height, another previous committee of adjustment approved variance linked to floor space index, front yard setback, front and rear exterior main wall heights and dwelling had a previous and and then it goes on to a third previous edition committee of adjustment application approved variance linked to lot coverage, side and rear yard setbacks for accessory structure and platform height and approachments. There are two variances. Um, there's coverage, which I'd like to talk about because it says from twenty-two percent to thirty-four point seven percent, which looks massive. If anyone got this in the mail in terms of a neighbor, but in fact, it appears that existing coverage granted in one of these various committee of adjustment approvals is now at thirty-two percent. So you're seeing to go from thirty-two to thirty-four point seven, which is still substantial, but not the same. We had a several um we have a refusal report. My question was whether that still stands um given their um uh and also we have a letter, I believe, support from the uh neighbor, the neighbor twenty right next door. It was actually a planner. Um, so anyway, there we have it. The applicant, the speaker uh is Ian Cunha. He's the only uh the only speaker registered to speak, so there are no neighbors uh uh present here, but they've had a lot of applications uh and the the last one was the Cabana New Deck in the October two thousand nineteen decision. Okay, so uh and then there was also approvals February twenty two thousand eighteen and before that, May two thousand sixteen. And here we are. Uh, the increase requested in the coverage in the FSI is again from point two eight to point three. So there we have it, Mr. Cunha, ultimately, uh, the ball over.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Ian Cunha representing the owners.
Okay, and I'd like to know whether you, whether planning report is still relevant or not from August twenty-sixth.
I I believe it is. I believe it is.
Thank you.
There is an email. Uh, it's labeled planning correspondence that that um states that it still stands.
Yeah. So I've been involved with this project since two thousand and sixteen. And most of those applications that we have made, the product, the the work was never done. So we had a permit to do a second story addition uh over the existing raised bungalow. It was not done. In two thousand and sixteen, we had, we asked um to do an addition at the front In 2016, we had, we asked to do an addition at the front and an addition at the back. And that addition at the back was never done. So all these applications, we have had to go to the committee of adjustment. So this, we actually had permits for everything, which my client has since withdrew from the, from the billing department. So what we're asking for now is, since we did not do that addition at the back, that nine-foot addition at the back, we are asking permission to extend the garage five feet, nine inches forward. And the reason is that they have an elderly parent who had, who required an elevator to be able to go from the garage to the first floor. And by installing this elevator with a building permit, by the way, we no longer can park one of the cars inside the garage. So we're asking the committee to allow for this small five-foot, nine-inch extension to the garage. Taking in consideration that even by doing this, even though the lot, the lot coverage is high, it's still lower than what it was in 2016, when we had an addition at the back and an addition at the front. So out of necessity, we're coming back to the committee of adjustment to increase the size of the garage by five feet, which is what the elevator size was. I understand that the, the lot coverage is high, but because this is a single-story home, the existing first floor is already quite high. So we're only adding 120 square feet. But in reality, we reduced the addition at the back that was granted by the committee of adjustment back in 2016. So that was never done. So I hope that I was able to clarify why the lot coverage is where it is. And as a matter of fact, the, when we went to the committee of adjustment in 2016 to do that nine-foot addition at the back, we did not have any opposition from planning.
Yeah, so basically you've had three, gone to committee three times. The only one you actually built was the October 2019 one for the Cabana in the rear deck.
And we also built the front, front addition in 2016. The front addition was done, was, was the back addition that was not done.
I see. Well, yeah, the planning memo says they, neither of them was done. I'm just reading it. The 2016, it says they weren't constructed, the additions were not constructed.
The, the front addition was, was built, was only the rear addition, which is in the same part of the house as the extension to the garage.
Okay, you got your lot coverage to 32% at that time. So that's what I'm saying. It shouldn't, that's what the, to me, what the notice should have said. That you already had 32. It should have said permitted is 22, you're seeking whatever, 34, and you were granted 32 in October. So you're, you actually, your property, even though the neighborhood is 22, you had 32. So that's my only, as long as everyone, the members realize, and you realize, and the other, you have, I just thought it would make some of the neighbors come forward to go, oh my God, they're looking to go from 22 to 34.
You're actually. And part, part of that lot coverage percentage was also something that I was not involved with, which was a cabana. When they renovated the backyard and put in the swimming pool, there was a cabana that was installed at the back, and that actually added, I think there was 2% that between the 32 and 34 was the cabana.
Was, wasn't that what you requested in October 2019? It was granted, that's what you asked? It was, that was.
Yeah.
Right?
I was not part of that application.
Oh, you weren't, but it was someone else was?
Yes.
Okay, that's what counts. Okay, so planning is, we have a negative planning report and that's, you'd like to continue or you're finished? I guess you're, oh, you have.
Unless you have some, any question, I, I think I'm done.
You have a support letter from the neighbor right next door. From 32 and then also 28.
Yeah, like this, this addition that we're proposing is not going to alter the look of the house or anything like that. It's just basically an extension to the garage so that we can park the car where the, where the elevator is.
Okay. Okay, and I see your next door neighbor is aware of that. He mentions that in his approval letter.
Correct.
He's a, an architect and a partner of a prominent planning firm in the city. So if he, he seems to be okay with, he's living next door. That says something. Okay, so committee members, any further questions or is someone ready for a motion?
Just, Mr. Chair, for me, in 2016, I believe the FSI of 0.58 was granted. So does that approval fall away because the construction didn't happen?
Yes, correct. The, we, we actually, at that time, we were doing an addition over the existing bungalow. That's why it was a 0.58, and that was approved. We actually had a building permit.
Right, but because you canceled the building permit, that approval is nullified.
Correct.
Okay.
Was that a mistake? Is permitted is 0.28, and he's asking now for 0.3? P. 0.28 is obviously, you know, those are reserved for really big lots, which this is, I guess, and so how did he get 0.58? That would have been like more than twice.
Through the, through the committee of adjustment.
Yeah. Anyway, that's.
Just pointing that out.
Yeah. Twice on. How, that must be a mistake, because, and I guess it was like, I thought it was not relevant because he didn't build it, but.
It's in the decision.
Yeah, okay. Maybe staff just curious to take a look at that after tomorrow and see how that possibly 0.5 in this neighborhood seems a little odd. But anyway, whereas 0.28 is permitted. Okay, any further questions or is someone ready for a motion?
Yeah, Palmer, I've got a, just a quick question. So this is tied to a site plan, which generally is for a one-story building. The previous approvals were particularly the FSI was for a two-story buildings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so so if we tie any approval to a site plan, then that sort of nullifies the previous committee of adjustment approvals that don't apply to this particular site plan?
Is that from, from me to answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so basically for, for me to go back to apply for a building permit, the zoning would be reviewed from scratch. So if I made alterations, like I'm asking to do that now, that automatically would void any, any previous decision.
Yeah, I just don't know. I don't know legally if you get a minor variance, it doesn't necessarily apply to a plan. It applies to the property.
Okay, what we have before us are these variances. I think let's just, you know, we have certain, two variances before us. Those are the two variances. Let's just decide on those two variances and they can, like I said, if it stood, then you wouldn't be here getting, having to get permission at 30%, if you already had 58%. So I think it speaks for itself. This is, package, this, this project triggers two variances as terms of, the only thing is I was issuing the one that was already approved, the coverage of 32%, he's already at 32% in my view. Mr. Dunne, Mr. Carvelino agrees, but that's what's before us. So let's, you know, if we deal with these two variances, whether they're worthy of support or not.
Okay, I'm comfortable that the variances requested in this application are minor in nature and meet the four tests in the planning act. So I'm comfortable moving approval for these requests.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any conditions here? Okay, there's one with actually no urban forestry on this one, and I guess nothing. Tiny was looking for the refusal, so it's not, it's not there either. So no conditions, I take it, right? Okay, a second for Mr. Palmer's motion. Mr. Muski, thank you. All in favor? I don't see the other two, Stan or Sophia. I assume they're, they're okay. They're in, in approval.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Sophie. I am as well.
Okay, so you have unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, good to hear. Be well. Next time, we have two more. Item 33, 130 Lake Promenade. It's an application. This was deferred from September 29, 2022. Again, there was no purpose. It was on, on the notice. So there was an automatic deferral. It is a two-story rear addition and a one-story addition above the existing building. There's four variances. We have streetscape elevation, a performance standard checklist, materials from the previous hearing, including the minutes and supplementary material. Okay, two letters to support. Speaker for this is Ben Dominguez. Mr. Dominguez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ben Dominguez. My address is 133 Evans Avenue, Toronto, and I'm here to represent the owners of 130 Lake Promenade.
Hey.
I don't know if you want a presentation. I think it's fair, straightforward, but I can give a presentation if necessary.
Uh, staff, staff, members, I don't think we need a presentation to just have any questions for Mr. Dominguez. Uh, there's no one here with any concerns. There's no urban forestry conditions, the purpose of the previous deferral was just not, no purpose. It was an automatic deferral, was negotiated. And no one's weighed in, including community planning. So if there's no questions, is someone ready for a motion? Mr. Kilmorick?
I'm good for a motion. I'm actually impressed for Lake Promenade in that area, where we usually see a multitude of variances. This is actually quite, quite reasonable, and so therefore I have no issue with defining it as minor and would like to move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Kilmorick. Second for that?
Sophia.
Thank you. All in favor? You have unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you again. Be well.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, bye-bye. Our last application of the afternoon is 348 BNC, 239 Aldercrest, parts one and two. This is an application to gain consent to sever the property into two undersized lots and thereon to build to just demolish the existing and create two new semi-detached dwellings requiring each, each requiring heat variances in the zoning bylaw. We have a, yeah, this was deferred from September 29 in order for proper notice to be given. And we have an applicant's presentation. Septems, planning has advised their previous report. They said September 21, but I think it was September 13. The still stands. And the speaker is Terrence Glover for the applicant. So, planning.
Terrence, please don't mute yourself. Let city staff be responsible for that. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
So in the, in the original package, we have a planning justification report. Perhaps we can get that up on the board as we hear from Mr. Glover, because I believe community planning, that they have just want to clarify, they had, they were originally, at the time this matter was first before the committee and couldn't be heard because of a notice issue, they were recommending refusal and they advised their memo still stands. Okay, so the floor is yours, subject, you know, in light of this, the planning concerns in their memo, why this is worthy of support.
Thank you. And if I could ask to put my presentation up as opposed to the plan justification report, if that pleases the chair?
Sure, whatever you want up there is.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Terrence Glover. I'm from Urban Mind Planning Consultants, representing the owner of the property. Just a little bit of back history here. So we submitted back in April last year, or earlier this year, sorry. The planning staff report and planning comments were not supportive. So we went back and looked at this again to see if we can fix things or make it more palatable. We had discussions with planning staff. They basically said that they weren't generally opposed to this, but they couldn't support it for technical reasons because of the lot frontage. And they strongly encouraged us to go through committee of adjustment because the committee can make their own decision up as to what they feel is correct or not correct. So we, we went back again, looked at the variances reduced, some of which I'll go through, and came to the committee with the application a month ago. Unfortunately, city staff had made an error in the, in the distribution, circulation of notice, and we could not, we were ready to go, but we couldn't meet last month. So we were deferred to this one, and obviously they put us at the end of the hearing. So we've been sitting here trying to deal with this. Nonetheless, if you can slip to the first slide there, whoever's controlling the slide. There we go. So our subject property currently is a bungalow on Aldercrest Road, a 239 Aldercrest, and I'm sure you, everybody's aware of the general conditions of the site there, but I'll just go through them really quickly. I don't want to take up too much more of your time since we're the last hearing today. So it's, it's in the transition neighborhood. These older bungalows, some wartime housing type things where it's new invigoration and new people and younger people are living in the, are moving into this area. Obviously, some people find it affordable. Some people want to spruce their buildings up. So currently, the, the owner of the property sees an opportunity to do semi-detached here to add more housing in this area because of the, the type of housing, semi-detached, typically that's around here. Semi-detached would fit in nicely in terms of adding infill intensification. Unfortunately, some of the aspects of the design, and being on the committee, I'm sure you're aware, that you're seeing a lot more floor space issues, et cetera, because the garages can no longer be built subsurface or a negative grade. So all garages now are being built at grade, therefore eliminating basements. Therefore, the, the at-grade base, or basement is now considered the first floor, where the second, third floor was the second, the first and second floor before. And they're all counted as floor space now because they're not basement. So you're seeing these applications because of the way interpretation of staff is, is currently moving, and there's nothing wrong with it. There is, there is a negative impact from negative driveways, the slope, the rainwater slopes down. So I understand why they're at grade, but they haven't translated that into practical solutions for the floor area. If we go to the next slide. Okay, you'll see that it's, the official plan says it's in the neighborhoods area, the next slide. Again, the zoning is in the RM zone neighborhoods here, next slide. If we can zoom in on that a little bit, just so we can read it. Essentially, what I've done here is I've created a chart where what the bylaw requirements are, what the existing situation is today with the bungalow, what we previously proposed, and then we went back and changed things and, and tried to make it more palatable, reduce the size of the building, reduce the impacts, and to the far right, that currently proposes what we're proposing today, and that's what we're seeking relief on. You'll see that individually, there, there's not a great difference. I mean, there, there are obviously reductions or increases wherever, but the, the difference between what is required and what is being proposed is not a great difference. And, and I understand hearing all the, the, the applications that you've dealt with tonight, the main concerns, and, and I'm not speaking for you, but this is what I've, I've heard. The main concerns with these developments is what is the, what's the impact to the neighborhood? Does it fit within the character of the neighborhood? Or do you have definite comparables that you can show that, that where this has occurred? And, and is this appropriate or good planning? And so I'll, I'll put to you that the four tests are based on, on individual, each individual minor variance. And there is no fifth test of whether combined they equal the four tests. So although it's, it's in principle, you can look at each individual on its own merits and say yes or no. And I, in my opinion, each individual minor variance that we're asking for today is appropriate. And then you looked at a combined minor variance. So again, there's no test for that, but we would look at it to see if it's generally appropriate. And what, after I do my presentation, I think you'll find that it is appropriate. If we go to the next slide, please. Okay, you'll see the original plan on the top and the revised plan. You can see that the floor area has been reduced, the, the building length has been reduced. The back patio has been eliminated or very reduced. Anyways, there's a landing there for the door. We have great, a great amount of amenity space in the rear yard because it's a very long and narrow lot. So there's adequate land here. We're providing a driveway. Um, so there's adequate uh, uh land here. We're providing a, a driveway. Uh and a garage parking space, so it's not going to impact the street at all in terms of parking. Um unfortunately, again, the park, the garage has to be uh positive sloped driveway, so therefore it can't be in the basement. So it's the first floor. Which triggers some of the uh variances for, for the floor area. Um, if you go next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, very good. Uh, you'll see the garage on the first floor uh and the windows. It's a very. Uh common type of semi-detached that you're seeing in Toronto, especially in this neighborhood. Um, as people are trying to work within the zoning uh permissions. Um, but trying to maximize the square footage uh to allow a, a usable house under today's um design preferences. I mean, i- if you look fifty years ago, a bungalow is more than satisfactory, but in today's standards, unfortunately, families don't um. If they can afford more, they won't prefer to live in a bungalow. They want a, they want a modern type house. And this is what the, the client's trying to provide here. Um, next slide, please. This is the sides of the building. We have, uh, we've done the roof in a way that creates uh architectural interest. And we've uh provided fenestration or the windows uh at different sizes to give uh different uh characteristics of the size of the building. However, you're not really going to see too much of them. Um, but nonetheless, it, it gives, you, you will be able to see the roof line and it gives a, a lot of interest to the neighborhood. So we specifically cut those back to give um almost a, a audience or, or whatever, but. Uh, it's not a straight roof, so it's not plain. It's visually attractive. Next uh slide, please. And this is the general rendering of what we're proposing. Okay, uh next slide. One of the biggest concerns I have with staff reports is they, they present the illusion. That, that this property is not uh the prevailing size, prevailing use, et cetera. And it's therefore it's not appropriate because it's not prevailing. What they have not provided, and I have a, I, I take uh concern with, is they haven't given you the full policy. They've given you a snippet of the policy and the, and, and correct what they've said is the majority of properties should, should be. Uh um in, in character with what we're proposing. But it also says that prevailing character. Um, sorry, where is it?
Mister Chair has a note. We're at eight minutes for the presentation.
Okay, I didn't, I can't see the clock, so I, okay, so please wrap up.
Okay, well, next, so next slide, please.
So like the time, because this is a more complex, it's a consent that variance, but I think we've given you ample time. You've gone three minutes over, so please up. Thank you.
Mister Chair, if I may add, we have a severance and two minor variance applications all in one. And I'm just tuning them all at the same time.
Sir, I gave you eight. You have eight minutes because I didn't see the clock. So please wrap. Thank you.
So the, my last point here, that we have uh, that prevailing does not have to be the maximum. It has to. Show that they're existing in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. You can see on here, the yellow, our, our current townhouses is just like we're proposing on the same street as us. Next slide, please. And these ones here, one to five, have frontages that are the same as what we're proposing or smaller. So there's at least five that we just picked out of thin air that says that have recently got approvals within the last five years. That says these frontages are six point eight-six or, or less from a frontage point of view. So when the city says they, they're not prevailing. They may not be the most common, but there are examples of this occurring in the neighborhood and we pointed out five.
You know, can you show how, how close is that in proximity? You're saying we just in the last application, Mister Kameric. So how close is these comparables to the subject property? Again, you got to remember, are these lots, at least a little right on the right, are they created as a, as a result of a severance or were they existing lots?
No, created as a result of a severance.
Okay, that's, that's because that's what you were doing here. So that's where the relevance is, right?
That's right, yes.
Yeah. So, okay, so please wrap up. I'll give you now, um.
Okay, just final statement is uh, the, the variances that we're requesting. Um are actually going to be complimentary to the street. They are in character with what is being happening in the neighborhood as a transitioning. Uh granted, technically speaking, it doesn't meet the requirement for frontage, but we've given examples where others have not as well. We feel that this will fit in, reinvigorate the neighborhood and be a positive influence for infill for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's interesting. We don't have any comments from any neighbors. Uh although we do have this planning report, which is very clear and uh.
We went around to the neighborhood to ask the neighbors and they, they, they weren't opposed to it.
Yeah, okay. So the, the issue with me is, you know, you're creating, looking to create was sort of a, a. Privilege, not a right to create new lots, undersized lots, significantly nine meters to about seven meters. And that's fine, but then, and then you, then you're looking to push the envelope with, you know, a two-meter variance in uh. In uh, in depth, uh three-minute difference in length, a two-meter variance in height. You're sort of pushing the envelope here. It's like one thing to get undersized lots and then you're trying to. And everyone tries to get as much, obviously, you know, more house, the better. But the question is, usually it's the neighbors that come forward. I'm just interested, there's no neighbors here and there is the planning department. So that's just my comment. Uh, the members, any questions or comments uh from Mister Glover?
Uh yeah, a couple of quick questions for me. Um, there's some conditions, um if we approve this from. Um engineering and construction services and from heritage. Are you able to. Meet these conditions or did you review them and?
We did. The, the only one I was questioning was the heritage. This is a disturbed area. And, but they want an archaeological report at additional cost. So, I mean, if, if that's the only issue that's holding us back, we'll do it. But um I think it's a little um onerous to ask for a heritage review when this has always been residential or farmland one hundred and fifty years ago. Um, it's going to come back that there's, it's residential to residential. There should be no, no issue. So. It's kind of redundant to ask for, but again, if that's what's holding the committee back, we'll be happy to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no urban forestry on this one, so I guess uh. I'm sticking two semis on this lot, not affecting any trees seemingly.
There was a neighbor's tree that I believe already came down on the neighbor's property.
Oh, hold on.
A little, um, I guess a seed, it's a very small tree, uh that was on our property, which, which will be impacted. Um, but I, we've already talked with forestry and planning and had it.
There are. Yeah. One, yeah, three. But there are two conditions. Okay, so any other questions or someone ready for a motion? Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
I, I, I'd like to make a comment if I can before we get promotions. Uh, I, I, I think it's desirable to do the severance. Uh, I have no issue with that whatsoever. I think the applicant, I, I would concur with the chair that the applicant is pushing the envelope on the uh. On the variances. And, you know, this is, these are semis. They're being proposed well over through three thousand square feet each. And the fact that you've got uh variances, substantial variance for. GFI, we understand that with the garage, but there's also variances for length, uh height. Uh, the, the, the massing just seems excessive to me. That's my.
Let me comment to that, Mister Chair. Sir, if I may give a comment to that really quickly.
Uh, okay, well, look, allow you one comment, then we're going to bring it into committee because these discussions are usually happening after we've sort of. Brought it into committee. So sure, let's, let's have a comment. I'll allow you to do that.
Okay, I, I thank you for the, for the comment on that, the square footage. We've approached the neighbors. The neighbors are satisfied. Uh, the, you're granted, your impact is what you're suggesting here may be greater, uh but you're not going to really, we can still. To a building, the same outside dimensions as what we're doing and only, and come up with the same floor space. So the floor space really doesn't impact the neighborhood at all. It's just how you're going to live in the building. The buildings itself could still look the same. So all we're asking for is a, is a variance on the floor space, which really doesn't impact anybody but the person who lives there. I, I do respect your, your comment, though.
It, it, my, my comment really has to do with the length of the building as, as, you, you, it's the accumulation of all of them, but anyway, that's.
The length, the height, the depth and the amassing and the fact that it's being created as a substandard lot that's almost two meters less than what's. Than what's uh permitted uh, uh for a standard lot. So and then, you know, like you said, if you got that and built a house that didn't push the envelope on. All of those matters. Anyway, uh we'll bring it to committee then for a discussion. Thank you, uh. Sir, this is what you chose to come to committee with and uh you knew about community planning's uh opinion. The fact that neighbors, maybe some of the neighbors are uh waiting around to, to do the same, to split their lot. And build big houses on them over three thousand square feet. So that could be a reason. Um, in any way, we have, so let's see if someone ready to uh to weigh in with a motion. And I don't have a visual on several of the members, so if you can just pipe up when you're ready. And I can scroll, okay. All I had to do is push my, my page over and then I would see them. Okay, I'll note for next time. Uh, last.
I, 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 I'm, I'm not sure if I'm the best one to do the motion, but um. I, 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 I can't do a motion to approve the variances. I just think it's an overbuild. Um, I'd like to move a motion to do the severance, but I'm not sure if we want to split that, so.
Can't do that.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm going to hold back unless someone else has a different motion.
Yeah, because we can't, we don't split lots and then Mister Carvelino can confirm. We can't, uh, we don't do a, a severance and then leave it open-ended, uh.
Yeah. Well, definitely, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll move a motion to refuse.
Okay. Seconded for that motion?
Sophia, second.
Thank you. All in favor? Uh, I guess it's unanimous. The application is refused. Uh, hey, to end off the day on a refusal. I feel that, you know, our job is here to try to get as much uh applications uh approved as can be to uh. Assist with our housing crisis. Uh, but uh this is, this wouldn't feel too much. So. The application is refused and now we need a motion to adjourn as we are done for the day.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. She's seconded by Sophia. All in favor? For adjourned. Thank you very much, uh members, a long day, but I think we uh, I think, thank, thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And especially thank you to the staff who are the uh behind the scene. To Adam and to certainly to my scene Phil.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone have a good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great, uh, weekend.